...tonight, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, all. In honor of Black History Month, and this being the last commission meeting of Black History Month, I'd like to recognize some of the local black heroes that we have here, and to name off the city commissioners that were African-American in the past, from the past until the present. And those being Thomas Darden, Al Mason, Leroy Sizmore, Danny Edman, Brett Fuqua, Purvis Brown Jr., Deidre Cole, Commissioner Naomi Twine to my right, and Commissioner Wesley Poole to my left, and me being the last city commissioner, myself Greg Lockhart. I'd like to offer an invocation from W.E. Du Bois. He was an educator and civil rights activist who became the first African-American to receive a doctorate at Harvard. And it goes like this. "Give us grace, O God, to dare to do the deed which we well know cries to be done. Let us not hesitate because of ease or the words of men's mouths or on our lives. Mighty causes are calling us: the freeing of women, the training of children, the putting down of hate and murder and poverty, all these and more. But they call with voices that mean work and sacrifices and death. Merciful grant us, O God, the Spirit of Esther, that we say, 'I will go on to the King, and if I perish, I perish.'" Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting on February 13, 2017. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the February 13 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Question, second discussion. Lot objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We have a video, I believe, that is going to be presented, so Stuart Hamilton is indicating yes. And this is illustrating some work, then celebrating some work by Harbor Creek Designs. Bethany Coop and Justin Anderson are investors in our city. And without further ado, I guess we'll roll the video. Unless one of them wants to introduce the, someone present wants to introduce it?
They're actually in room right now, and they will be here in about two minutes, so...
Okay. Why don't we watch the video while we're waiting for them to get here?
While we're waiting for them. Having an idea, bringing it to life, having the courage to do so. You know, it takes a lot of drive to want to do something like this. It's not everybody wants to be a business owner, not everybody wants to do something new, and this is new for people down here, this type of furniture, this type of stuff that we have.
Being a pioneer is stepping forward, put yourself out there, and keep going. You can't stop. There's nothing that can get in your way, and don't be afraid to get your hands dirty along the way, because that's bound to happen. Nothing gets handed to you, just keep going for the dream, and someday you'll get there.
Downtown is somewhere where I could fit in, because I wanted to take a building that had the really neat storefront, and make it fresh and new, and this building had what I was looking for.
We love the location and the scenery and everything else that surrounds this place, and we've had nothing but help from the city since we've been here.
Kindness. I want to make something for people that's real, something that's made here. So my ideas were to have a business where I can make things that I love and that I designed that I can sell for people who are going to love it, too.
Very nice. McKinsey, anything to add?
I, they're lying, so if you don't mind, I'll just wave you down.
Okay. All right. We have a couple other things to get to, so we'll circle back. Wave me down when they get here, please. You have the floor. You have a special presentation, recognition of several officers.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Murray, commission members, staff members, and audience. I wanted to, there's two individuals here, two officers, that I wanted to recognize after receiving a letter from one of my acting shift commanders, and I thought this was very important, and I thought this was a recognizable moment, because oftentimes, in our two career fields, when we have something, or when somebody does a good job, we usually make fun of them as, because we're too, like, weird about complimenting each other. So we usually, it, we don't get the recognition sometimes that we deserve. But I wanted to, again, read off a letter, I want to read off a letter from Captain Jason Resch. As you know, we've had a few issues lately that has kept us, both of our departments quite busy. So I received this letter the other day, and, let me put my glasses on here. "Since Chief Degnan, I wanted to take a minute and pass on something that I've noticed over a couple of recent calls. We have always had a great working relationship with our police counterparts, but two recent incidents stand out to me. The first was an incident involving a shooting with two victims. While there were several officers there working together, I had direct contact with two of them. Officer Rob Garden, and if I could ask you guys to step out from behind the, you guys could probably step out over here, so..." This is Officer Rob Garden and Carissa Cruz. So Jason mentioned Officer Rob Garden was in the parking lot, which was in a state of absolute chaos. "I approached him as to ascertain the location of the two vic, of the victims, and even, and even with everything going on around us, and no shooter in custody, he gave me the directions with absolute calm politeness and professionalism. His demeanor helped to put me and the rest of my crew at ease and allowed us to focus on our jobs. When I entered the establishment, I found Officer Carissa Cruz with the patient administering aid. She obtained a belt from someone and used it as a tourniquet to control the bleeding from a leg injury. The placement was precise and correct, and was working very well. As the ambulance had not yet arrived, I asked her if she was able to maintain the tourniquet while I located the other patient. The other patient was located and found to have a minor injury, so we directed them to an incoming EMS crew. While I directed the other crew to the first patient, patient care was transferred and continued without incident. Officer Cruz did an excellent job that evening, and may have even saved the patient's life." The second incident was at a drug overdose last evening. There were numerous EMS calls occurring at the same time, and this incident required an ambulance from another district to respond. So Engine 921, that's our main fire engine, responded with Captain Resch. They arrived on scene and with Officers Garden and Cruz right alongside. Officer Garden was tending, tending to a very emotional bystander, and was able to get them to leave the room, staying with them, and explaining what we were doing while also comforting them. This gained us valuable room and allowed us to communicate more easily, and also assured us that a potential second victim was being monitored by Officer Garden. Officer Cruz had already administered Narcan intranasally, and was now ventilating the patient with very good technique, using a bag-valve mask device. This was a lot, this was allowing our two, our two crew members to tend to the other needs of the patient. Again, Officer Cruz continued to provide ventilations until the patient became responsive. The actions of these two officers, and all officers, have always been impressive, but in these two cases, they were outstanding. I wanted to share this with you, to show you how well our departments are working together, and how proud I am to be a part of this team. So with that, I just wanted to come up here, and I felt it was very important, again, that these two officers who do a very good job, and sometimes we don't say thanks to each other, and they, both of them, with their actions saved two lives, if not three lives, and they probably do that every single night they're out there on the road. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Chief, could you come on up here for...
Oh.
You didn't think you were getting off easy. This is the chief's last meeting, and he's sadly retired. And I have proclamation that I'd like to submit on behalf of the city, and Mr. Lockhart is the fire department liaison, has something he wants to present as well. So, why do?
Oh, look at that.
My wife Renee.
This is my wife.
Thank you for being here.
A boss.
Glad you could join us.
Thank you.
And like you, I need my reading glasses to read this, so. Whereas Officer, whereas Dave Degnan has dedicated himself to public service for 29 years of his life, and whereas Dave served in the U.S. Air Force as security police from November 18, 1985, to December 1, 1994, receiving an honorable discharge. And whereas Dave was hired, lived in the Sandusky Fire Department on January 12, 1997 as a firefighter, was promoted to the position of lieutenant on December 20, 2001, and again promoted to the position of captain on May 7, 2009. Whereas in 2014, after an extensive search for a new fire chief, Dave Degnan was appointed to this esteemed position on July 17, 2014. And whereas Dave has been a good and faithful steward of the city of Sandusky and its residents with whom he has been entrusted. And whereas Dave has consistently displayed the highest example of character, ethics, moral, and unself, morals, and unselfish service to the citizens of our community. And whereas Dave has announced his plans to retire on March 8, 2017, and the city of Sandus, the city Sandus, excuse me, the Sandusky City Commission hereby extends to him, his wife Penelope, and their family, our best wishes for many years of happiness and good health. Therefore, I, as the president of the commission, on behalf of the entire commission, wish to express our deepest gratitude for your service, your exemplary service, charge. Thank you very much. Chief. Thanks.
We're not done yet. You know, I have to play this music for you, because I said I was going to... It's charity to fight. I, I had to give it to my first officer. I'm retiring on one day. While I missed 20 years of service. (Applause). You know, I just want to say thank you to everybody, to the citizens, to all the staff that I've worked with, to the fire department guys that I've worked with, to the police department, everybody, to the city commissioners, and it's been, truly been an honor working with every single one of you. I've enjoyed serving you, I've come to work every single day, and I've always, I've, I know this sounds bad, but I've loved it when a call came in, because I knew that if I could go out and help somebody, just, just to try and make their day better, that, that was the best part of this job. So I think that you guys are in very good hands with the current fire department that you have right now. Captain Amico, again, you saw him last week, but he's going to be taking over on my spot, and I'll always be here if you guys need help on something, just let me know, and I think that's enough of my life like this. Thank you, yes, thank you, so.
We're going to miss you. Now, McKinsey, you have there with you two very famous people in the back of the room, because we've all just seen them on the television monitors, so we are, we are delighted to welcome again Bethany Coop and Justin Anderson, the owners of, I got to get it right, Harbor Creek Designs.
Yeah.
And welcome, and we just enjoyed your video, and we're happy to hear from you, and thanks for investing in our city.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything that you'd like to, we, we did all watch the video, it was really a great production.
Thanks.
And I just, if you had, I wanted to recognize you personally, and if there was anything that you wanted to say or add.
Thanks for being a good city to us. Gravitas.
Gravity is good, we like that. Well, unless there's something else, Commissioners, anyone else want to?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I appreciate your opening and investing in the city of Sandusky. As I've said many times before, small business is the backbone of America, and I hope that we, as a city, can do all it takes to facilitate you into growing inside the city.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
You have the microphone, what do you do? Tell us about Harbor Creek Designs quickly, I just saw the video, I still don't know what you're talking about.
Better spokesperson.
There you go.
I am not. We make custom furniture.
Okay.
So if you have an idea of something that you want made for your home, or anybody else, anything, really, we can do that for you. We use all solid wood and local materials. So, that's what we do.
There you go. Free commercial, how's that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. We have now, Mr. Harris is asked to make a presentation explaining the various pieces of legislation that we have before us tonight, so, Mr. Harris, if you listen to some of the various boards and commission changes, Mr. Harris, you might walk us through that. Appreciate it. Now?
Thank you. Through the commission president to the commission, when I was first appointed as law director in 2016, May of 2016, one of the first tasks that I was charged with the responsibility of was completing a thorough review and assessment of the 44 boards and commissions that, that my predecessor, Trevor Hayberger and Don Iceman, had undertaken. Don's retirement left Trevor holding down the fort by himself, so it's a task that we eventually took up after there was two people back in the law department. While it was an important project on the law department's to-do list, it was pushed to the forefront, I believe, at the December 12, 2016 commission meeting, when the commission unanimously passed a motion directing the city manager to direct the law department to review city appointed boards and commissions, and provide training as the law department determined to be needed, and to make recommendations for improving the effectiveness of the boards and commissions. An integral part of accomplishing these tasks was to acquire a complete understanding of the boards' makeup, purpose, and working relationship with other boards. In researching this board, these boards, it was discovered that the term periods for all 44 boards were different. Some boards had two-year terms, three-year terms, six-year terms, some boards didn't have any terms. It was also discovered that some boards were created but had never met. Some boards were created to address a certain issue or project which had reached its, reached a resolution, thereby making a board obsolete. Some boards overlapped with regard to function and purpose for other boards, and would better serve the city if combined. While other boards appeared to not know their purpose and function, and needed either revamped guidance by way of codifying or spelling out their function, or guidance by way of orientation to its members. The law department thought it would be prudent to have the city commission do the proposed ordinances tonight, provide consistency throughout the boards and commissions by way of terms, combine boards that need to be combined, create boards that have never been officially created but are necessary, repeal boards that have served their purpose, revamp certain boards and commissions based on extensive research conducted from other municipalities facing same or similar issues, and provide legislation clarifying certain boards' purpose and function where it may not have been clear in the past. An example of combining boards, and what we'll do is, we'll get into this when we get to the actual legislation, and there'll be a time to comment, but an example of combining boards would be the, the recommendation to combine ADA and fair housing. What I discovered in my research is fair housing had never met for the past nine years. The ADA is important committee, and it's important to the ADA community. However, through the, the progression of ADA law from its inception in 1990 throughout its most recent amendment in 2009, the federal law with respect to ADA has become pretty, pretty, pretty strong, and has teeth in it, whether it be from an employment standpoint, or, or even a construction or discriminatory standpoint. But we did feel that it was deemed necessary to keep that board, so we thought those boards should be combined, since fair housing's dealing with discriminatory practices in a housing situation, which may encompass people with disabilities. An example of providing consistency with respect to terms could be seen in the legislation with regard to Bayfront Corridor. We believe that they should still be comprised, they're still a value asset to the city, but if you look at their, their bylaw, I mean, the ordinance creating it, they had zero term, I mean, no term limits, or no terms defined, so technically they had a life sentence to the city to serve on the Bayfront Corridor. So what we thought is, provide consistency with their. Another example of eliminating a committee that may have served its purpose and has become obsolete would be the Parking Review Committee, which was specifically created in 1995 to review a 10-year parking plan, where in 2017, that 10-year study would have concluded in 2005. So at least from the standpoint of being on the books, I think it would be prudent for the city commission to repeal that ordinance. An example of combining and creating a board that doesn't exist would be the Proposed Economic Development Incentive Committee. Right now, we basically have two committees that serve as financial tools for the business community, whether it be through the revolving loan committee, which provides loans to businesses in economic development situations, or the Economic Development Review Committee, which is charged with responsibility of issuing grants. Obviously, all the money that will be given to this business, businesses are approved by the city commission, have final approval with the city commission. What we thought would be a good idea is to combine those two, and actually codify the committee, because I think the Economic Development Review Committee was never formally codified, and call it the Economic Development Incentive Committee, so that there's one economic development committee charged with the responsibility of seeing that the financial assistance provided to local businesses is ran through one board. An example of eliminating a commission on the books only, and I think I've, I've received a lot of calls and questions with respect to this, would be the Youth Commission. Just some background, it was discovered in my review of the Youth Commission that it was created in 2011 by former Commissioner Deidre Cole, who created the Youth Commission, but it has never met. Since its inception, it had never met, yet the ordinance required specific requirements as to its composition, the number of students, the number of times that they would meet with the schools, to help monitor current municipal youth activities within the city. Our recommendation to eliminate the Youth Commission as being obsolete is not a recommendation to forget about the youth in the city of Sandusky, but in acknowledgement that with the current leadership of our local schools, the part, the strong partnership that they have with the city of Sandusky, the hiring of a neighborhood outreach coordinator, and the strong recreational department, we believe the city and the schools will continue to provide civic opportunities to the youth. Just as an example, just prior to even coming in here, I know that Mr. Norman had indicated that he's going to work with the schools, and I think he has a meeting with Mr. Cokely at Sandusky City Schools with, with regard to talking, I mean, creating an organization, I think it's called Sandusky Next, that, and I may be butchering, butchering it, but basically, there are programs, and there are people in the community that are working with the youth with respect to repealing that ordinance, it was specifically repealing this ordinance as it's written, because, one, it hasn't met, and, but by no stretch of imagination is, is it a shot across the bow that the city of Sandusky doesn't believe that it should be concerned with its youth. Another committee that I want to speak on briefly, and I may pull in Commissioner Twine to comment briefly, is the garner controversy over the purported elimination of the HRC. When I first got here in May of 2016, I went to an HRC meeting, and at that meeting, the two questions that were posed on the topic of debate were, what's the, what's their purpose and function, and what are we, as a committee, legally allowed to do? Following that commission meeting, Commissioner Twine and I, as the liaison for the HRC, we met and discussed, I think, a number of times, to discuss better, potential ways to help provide answers to these questions. After speaking with Commissioner Twine, we conducted researches of other, and research of other municipalities that were even more diverse than the city of Sandusky, that have same, or even more, issues concerning discrimination. Cities like Cincinnati, Cleveland, Columbus, Chicago, Toledo, we reviewed all their boards and commissions, and how they function and serve the respective municipalities, and advising the cities on ways to help eliminate discrimination, or to remove the effects of past discrimination. The law department drafted an ordinance that not, that didn't eliminate an advisory committee to the city to help address human relations issues, but simply spelled out the purpose and function of the group, as well as spell out what powers the committee, committee legally has as a city of Sandusky Board and Commission. Legally, whenever, just so you guys are aware, legally, whenever an ordinance is being revamped or replaced, the prior ordinance is always repealed, that's just the legislative process. So in the packet today, if you have a packet, we call it the Community Relations Commission, you can call it the Human Relations Commission, continue to call it that, but basically, it's just the codified version of the mission and the creation of the HRC dating back to 1967, when it was created by the city of Sandusky, and is also consistent with other municipalities across the state and the Midwest. We can speak on that briefly, I don't know if Commissioner Twine wants to add anything.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Just to kind of give you a little bit of context for the conversations that I had with Mr. Harris. First off, I want to thank Mr. Darryl McDonald, I got a chance to talk to him a little bit prior, I'm sorry, Murphy. I got a chance to talk with him a little bit before this meeting, so I appreciate the conversation that, and I think we had a pretty frank conversation, and I look forward to having more conversations with, with Mr. Murphy. As a commissioner, it, I have to look at what's important for the community at large. I thoroughly and completely understand that I probably would not be sitting here had it not been for the work of the HRC. Back in the 60s, during the civil rights movement, at the height of that, I know that the HRC was very instrumental in providing opportunities for African-Americans. It was kind of apropos for Commissioner Lockhart to kind of go through the history of the African-Americans that have served on this commission. And so I really want to fully get out there that I understand that I might not be sitting here had it not been for the civil rights movement, had it not been for the work of the HRC. Now, thinking about that moving head, moving ahead, and I think a lot of us can relate to a lot of the headlines that are going out in the, in the news nationwide, there are issues with heightened discrimination, prejudices, attacks against not only people of color, but people of various religious faiths, Muslims, people of the Jewish, Jewish faith. And so, in thinking about moving ahead, how we, how we do this, I wanted to try to put together a, a structure or restructure the HRC, so that we have opportunities for people of multi-faith, multi-religions, multi-backgrounds, multi-economic levels, to be part of the HRC. So one of the things that we did that was kind of across the board with many of our boards and commissions, we wanted to have five people on the, on the newly composed HRC. What I wanted to have, I'm sorry, seven people, Mr. Harris gesturing to me, seven. Excuse me, seven people. Two of those people I would like to be from a nonprofit entity, organization, say maybe NAACP Executive Director or Chairman, be part of the newly formed Community Relations Commission. And then two clergy, which could include a Muslim cleric, a rabbi, again, diversifying what the, the true meaning is for the Community Relations Commission. And then two, two individuals that are pastors of the clergy, getting, getting someone like that on the Community Relations Commission would allow for the, for their work with the community, work with people of different, again, economic backgrounds, faith backgrounds, social backgrounds, all those things, making sure that they have a seat at the table. And then the remaining three would be members from the Sandusky community at large. And so that was my thinking when I was working with the law department and trying to come up with a structure that not only works for the black community, but works for all of our communities, because we are rapidly diversifying our communities, and we have to be open to that diversity. And we can't just narrow our focus to, to, to the historical representation of the HRC. We have to be very, very mindful of that, because again, a lot of us sitting at this table may not be here because of that work. And so building upon that foundation and moving forward is a way that I felt that we could diversify the Community Relations Commission, get people at the table involved that would allow for a more diverse representation of what this community is. We are doing a lot of things in the city of Sandusky, and we want to be open to, to various diverse... diverse, again, faith, backgrounds, all of those things. And so, those were my thoughts on how we needed to move forward with that.
And just in wrapping up, that was one of the, and that's an example of one that we wanted to revamp, not repeal, and I think there's a misunderstanding with respect to that. And lastly, after the ordinances that, I mean, the boards and commissions that are presented to the commission, after they're voted on tonight, we will bring them back for a second reading. We're not passing them under emergency, there'll still be 30 days in between them to open up for comment or questions or concerns that you may have as citizens of Sandusky, so the commission can take those under advisement. After the boards and commissions are finalized, the next step that the Law Department, Trevor and I wanted to do, was to provide an orientation to all of the boards and commissions, all the ones, even the ones that were not even proposed and changes, to just to sit down with them, spell out again exactly what their roles are, whether it be Planning Commission, Housing Appeals Board, Auditor Finance, and basically kind of bring everybody back to the center with respect to the ordinance that created them, and make sure that everybody's on the same page moving forward as to their roles and responsibilities as stewards of the city, sitting on boards and commissions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris, appreciate the explanation. All right, we turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular items of business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and if you would, please keep your remarks to three minutes.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. It looks like you're putting, are you putting these boards and commissions on the consent, or is this a regular ordinance?
It's a mixture, some yes, some no.
Well, this, you know, I serve on two committees. This is, I've heard you say that you're going to reorganize, but I didn't know how you were going to reorganize. And I feel like a lot of these committee members are volunteers. Sometimes you can't find seats for these committees. And I briefly read some of this, and it looks like you're replacing a lot of the members with professional people, more or less getting the residents off the boards. And I don't know where I stand. Like I said, I serve on two committees, and I've got a real big question on the revolving loan, that's one of my seats. Are you going to fire all of us on the revolving loan, or are you going to mesh us in with the other committee, the Economic Development Committee? I'm not sure on that. And if this is on consent items, you'll be defeating the purpose if you discuss this, because you want it, on consent items, you need to vote yes on all of the items that you have listed here without discussion. That's how I understand consent items. I don't think, we should have had a chance to discuss this a little bit more with the members, so they know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Oglesby, and I think my family has had an integral part in the Human Relations Committee. I think when we look at these type of organizations, we need to look at the mischief which created it. We are in a situation where we started an organization that had to do with racial discrimination. Now, we feel terribly for what's happening to Muslims and Mexicans and things of that nature, based on race and gender and things of that nature, but they need to come to us, we don't necessarily need to go to them. If you look out here, I mean, how many Muslims do we have? How many people of Mexican descent do we have complaining about the Human Relations Commission? We don't need to change it, we need to upgrade it. We need to give it enforcement power, we need to give it subpoena power, we need to put teeth in it. We don't need to dilute it, if that's what you want to call it. We too have looked at other cities, and other cities also have subpoena power and enforcement power. We need to send a strong message to the community and the nation that discrimination will not be tolerated in the city of Sandusky. We need to put some teeth in it. So, when you change it, you may, Justin and Naomi, you may want to talk to the community before you write it up. Perhaps we can help, okay? We certainly can't hurt. Thank you.
Mr. Oglesby.
It's hell following an attorney. DM Level, 2106 Mill Street. I too want to speak on the HRC, but as just about said it all, publicly, I'd like to thank each and every one of you commissioners for allowing me to serve on the HRC. To say the least, it's been interesting. My personal feeling, we can strengthen the HRC, that would be up to you commissioners to make it more viable in this community. I kind of disagree with Commissioner Twine. When we had nine members, if the religious community would have been interested, there had been openings, they could have applied. I have a few questions on the proposed ordinance, and for the benefit of the individuals that don't have a copy, I'll read the questions that I have. Of the seven members, two shall be employees, board members, or agents of a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, two shall be the clergy, which I've already spoken to. I don't see why one wouldn't serve the purpose just as well as two, which would leave more of an opening for members at large. On page two, under duties, investigate upon request of the City Commission and/or City Manager allegations of discriminatory incidents, and make recommendations for corrective actions, and coordinate efforts towards their resolution. E, F, verify information relating to complaints of alleged discrimination practices. I'd like an explanation on how that can be done, since currently, we cannot, we have no investigatory powers because of what we've been told. If we want to investigate here in the city, among the city employees, because of their My last one, I'm going to go to some of the prior ordinances to try to make my point. This ordinance is dated April 23, 2012. I'm going to read part of the duties and responsibilities of the HRC, that which I think is pertinent. To utilize its current policies and procedures in exercising the community police relations functions, to investigate through its own initiatives as a result of complaints received, discriminatory practices, to assist, consult, advise, with, and make recommendations to the city on the aspects of its duties, powers, and I'm going to stop there, because the point I'm trying to make is to utilize its current policies and procedures in exercising community police relation functions. This carried over through the revision passed April 23, 2012. In this update of the new commission, there's no mention of it. I'd like to know why.
Thank you, Mr. Level. As always, when these questions are asked, we take them up when we get to the particular piece of legislation. Go ahead.
Jeff Sherman, 1212 Butler Street. I'm just here for, to represent the young people in the community. I was not aware that we had a youth committee at all, and I agree that if it hasn't met since 2011, that something needs to be done. And so, my question is that, what replaces that? What is next? What do we do then? Rebuilding and refurbishing parks and things like that, and cleaning them up are great, but we have to get to the heart of the issue of our young people. How do we deal with these young people who don't have fathers in the homes? What type of programs and organizations do we have to gear towards that? Kids whose mothers are strung out on drugs and things like that, and they come from these households. Kids who are abused, these are the issues in working in the school system and working as a pastor in the community. These are things that I deal with, with young people all the time. And so, whatever we decide to do, I think we need to have something, but whatever we decide to do, I want to be on board, as the voice of our young people, to work with you, to get down to the core of these problems, to see what we can do to truly, because, you know, throwing programs and events and all of those things are great, but it's nothing if we're not getting to the core and the root of the problem that some of our young people are facing, that are driving them down these dead-end paths at 100 miles per hour, and then, when they hit the brick wall, then everybody's in uproar, but we haven't done anything to try to get them to detour from that route. So, that's all I wanted to say, just whatever is, whatever we're going to do, and hopefully there's something in place, hopefully there's a plan to replace that with something that will be more effective. I would like to, if at all available, be a part of that, the planning, I don't need to be over anything, but just a part of the planning, just be the voice of the young people to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Hi, Vicki Byrd, 2114 Wilbert Street. You know, God works in mysterious ways. I received this magazine today, I'm going to cover up the picture on the front, though, it's called The Intelligence Report, and to the sitting in for Chief Orzak, to you, Mr. Murray, have you ever heard of it? The Southern Poverty Law Center, anybody here? Have they ever heard of the Southern Poverty Law Center? I've been a member of that since 1998. I've been a member of the ACLU since 2005. They produce a great magazine called Stand. I'm a member of Amnesty International. I'm a member of the Americans United for the Separation of Church and State. To some degree, you have to separate. I don't have a problem praying before a meeting, because God knows we need help throughout this entire nation. I am now a newly member of the NAACP. I'm also a member of an organization called In These Times. I didn't know there was an HRC, not quite sure what you guys were doing. It's not difficult, I grew up in the 60s as well, through the heart of that, and saw what it was like from the assassination of Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King, Robert Kennedy, John F. Kennedy, everything that's going on, I've been paying attention since I was six years old. And some people don't believe that, but my father made sure we did. I know what it was like in the public school system, going from a Catholic school system into a public school system, a sense of culture shock. I have not just bi, but multiracial grandchildren. We're all multiracial, the way I see it. Somebody said that to me. There's a great book I'm reading right now, it's called Democracy in Black, how, I can't think of the rest of it, I'm sorry. Don't get rid of an organization where you're going to come together and talk, because we need it. It's been quite difficult in my life, trust me. It's not something that I, I carry no hate for anyone. I love everybody. God created us all equal, as far as I'm concerned. And what I live first and foremost by is the word of my Lord and Savior, and by the Constitution of the United States of America, and everybody does, we are all free. We are free, men and women, not just men, but men and women, and our children, as far as I'm concerned, in this city, to me, are the absolute most important thing.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
My name is Darryl Murphy, I serve as the first Vice President for the Sandusky Unit of the NAACP. Right now, I'm the Acting President in the absence of our President Jim Jackson, who's vacationing down in Florida. First of all, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you today. Information is key. Information, knowledge, is power. After talking with Commissioner Twine, Commissioner Lockhart, Commissioner Poole, and seeing the other commissioners here, and just getting some audience participation, that's why I say communication is key, because when you get ready to do some changes, where I talked with Commissioner Naomi, and she's already admitted it, we have to communicate before we get ready to make changes. Because, you know, things get started so quickly here in a small community of Sandusky. So, I would recommend that whenever you want to change some things, please get other organizations involved, get the community involved, and if we can, talk about it before we get ready to act on it. I'm glad to hear you made some points, Justin, that it's not going to take place today, and I'm up here talking about the HRC. It's not going to happen today, it's just this first step in it, but, you know, and you say you're changing the name, I've talked with Sister Washington, who's a member of that committee, I've talked with Mr. Level, who's on that committee, and what you want to do is change the name. But the problem, the issues, I guess, that I have as representation of the NAACP, is what the commission is supposed to be doing from the forefront, and that is community relations between the police force and the citizens. And I have to take some of the heat as well. I haven't, you know, came up to the forefront, I should have been on the HRC, at least giving some input on that committee, because Mr. Level, I said, he's blessed, he's getting up in age, but he has to pass that baton. And somebody has to be willing to take that baton and go forth, and I want to stand up and do that. I know we got some other young people in the community that wants to do that, and it's not a black thing, it's not a white thing, it's a people thing. We are members of one race, and that is the human race. And with Sandusky, Sandusky, we're just one incident away from things going sour. We've been fortunate with our relations between the police force, has been going well, but it only takes one incident for things to go sour, and that's when the HRC is going to be very important. Why? Because the community is going to go to that organization and want to know, why did this happen? What are you doing about it? And when we say we don't have any power, no teeth, you know, of course the police have to investigate, that's their job to do that, and we want them to do that. But when they're done with investigation, before anything is done, the HRC should be brought in, told what's the investigation, the results of that investigation, and what's the take on that investigation, so we can give some input. So, I'm hoping those type of changes will be put into the legislation, if it's going to be changed, to give the HRC some type of, for lack of a better term, teeth that is not just for show, because the community are going to want some answers when something happens. And if they hear it just from the police force, they're going to say, oh, it was a setup anyway. So, it's important for some nonpartisan organization to have some input into that. And that's where we want to keep the HRC. If the name is going to change, that's okay. And as far as the membership of people on that board, you know, some say, well, maybe not two ministers, one minister, as long as we get a number of people from the community, you know, that's not going to take up places. So, if you say you don't get three pastors or three ministers, are we going to get those from the community? So, I think Mr. Level has a good point there, I think we need to revisit that, if we can do that, maybe get that part of that changed. But as far as the NAACP, we want to be watching this issue, we have got cause on this issue. And, you know, with this new modern technology called, what is it, Facebook, or whatever that is, it doesn't take long for information to get out there. You know, I'm on Facebook, but I don't put anything, I don't post anything, I just read. So, it's very important that we deal with facts, not alternative facts, but real facts. And so, anything that we can do to help you as a commissioner, as a commission, as the city of Sandusky, please don't hesitate to call us, because we're all in this together. Sandusky is a beautiful place, 1642 North Launch My Drive, put that in the record, that's my, one of my homes, okay? Not a rental property, that's a home. So, but I'm from Sandusky, I've lived here my whole life, and it's a great community, I deal with Assistant Chief Frost and that, and the police, but we have to work together. And we have some certain people who get left out all the time, and as the NAACP, that's who we are here to represent, the persons who can't come through that door, who don't even feel safe coming into this building, because maybe they have did some crimes, or maybe they're just shy. But we have to speak for the people who won't speak for themselves. But we're all in it together, we thank you for this opportunity, thank you, Justin, for your explanation, Naomi as well, and Commissioner Lockhart for that, and all of the commissioners. But we must work together. Call me if needed. Ms. Level, Mr. Level, we love you very much, we're here to support you, anything we can do to help, please call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Monica Hall. I'm standing in regards to the Youth Commission. If I may start, I want to start with a story. When I was a little younger, I was asked to be a part of a group called Curtain Call. And we actually had meetings within different churches in the city, and all the kids came together, and we created skits and made a whole program. So we had a production down at State Theater, like, maybe eight weeks later. So the whole production was all kids, all doing their own thing, making commercials and just enjoying itself. But the best part about it was the finale, which was all the kids came onstage, different colored t-shirts, and we saying, "We are family." So that's what they did. And it made me realize is, that's what I want to see in my city. So that's where I found my purpose. So right now, I am the Sandusky High School Girls' Daily Basketball Coach. So just talking to the girls, I find out their history. Everyone has a different background. You never know where they come from when you get them to you. So in order to be a coach, you have to be a psychologist, a psychiatrist, a mother, a sister, a friend, a confidant, all in one. And you don't understand that when I talk to these girls, I say, what is there to do for yourselves outside of school, structured stuff in school? Nothing. Nothing for them to do, nowhere for them to go. So in my head, I'm thinking, I don't mind as the devil's workshop. So I'm thinking, what are we doing for our kids? Sorry that I did not know that there was a youth commission, because if I did, maybe I would have addressed this a long time ago. And I understand, sir, that you're going to speak with Sean Cogly. That's fine, but that's the sports aspect of it. So what I was thinking of was the youth commission could be a catalyst to open doors for our city's youth. It could serve and provide adequate resources, including but not limited to sports recreation, social and life skills training, cultural awareness and tolerance, civil pride, engagement, and so much more that they can learn. They can actually be productive citizens. They actually may start here, go away, and come back. But if there's nothing for them to come back to, what's going to happen to our kids? Everybody's going to leave. So that's one of the things. And I actually did my research. I checked on some other youth commissions, and I actually looked at one in Baltimore. And what they stand for is education. They have an educational committee, a public safety committee, a health and recreation committee, and a job and economic committee. And so I was looking at different things. We want to teach our kids to be better people. And right now, when there's nothing for them to do, and it's not all about sports. It's not all about sports. Sports is an avenue, that's an avenue for some of them, but it's not. And we need someplace for them to go, like a recreational center or something, somewhere that they can come together and work together, learn different things, learn different trades, learn about government, learn about public speaking, learn about whatever they want to be, they have a chance to go somewhere out of the streets. So I'm asking that you don't repeal the youth commission. Give it another name, give it another structure. I'm willing to be a part of it. Actually, I am going to be a part of it, and I just want to help out the kids, because I also, we also have a 16-year-old, and I understand. Life for these kids is hard, but we can make it better if we want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jennifer Washington, 1652 South Larchmont. For the last two years, I've been the chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission, going to be the CRC, or whatever you want to name it. I want to say that it's wonderful to see all of you here. It's wonderful. I wish that we could sometimes see people at our meetings. We discovered that there was 44 boards, boards that have not been, had meetings, things that are going to be eliminated. The city commissioners can only do so much. These boards are not, they don't have people because people will not volunteer. In order for Sandusky to be the town that we want it to be, it's your town. I hate the Facebook newspaper, because everything about the city commission, it never said, I mean, about the changing, it never said, and all the Facebook things that I read, I read the comments, I read everything, and it never said a word. The information wasn't out there. If you're going to put some information about your city, get the facts right. Everything was all backwards. It was all backwards. I think that the only way Sandusky is going to survive, and we have a wonderful town, I love my town, the only way it's going to survive is rather than come down here when you think something's wrong, find out what's happening. All these boards, all these commissions don't have people, and we're just sitting and complaining. Our commissioners have done a wonderful job of, do all of you have an idea of all the changes that are happening in Sandusky? They're doing a wonderful job, but let's not complain about what our city is doing. Let's get on board. We're blessed that we're not like Cincinnati Cleveland, kids getting shot in the streets. But we have to step up. You have to step up to the plate. This is your town. This is your committee, as far as the Human Relations Commission, or whatever name it's going to be. We're starting out fresh. We will have all new members. Even though I've been the chair for two years, I'm going to reapply, because I love my city, I love my town. And if we have to, or if we're the same that we were, it started when I graduated from high school. Now, I graduated in 1965. I celebrated my 50th class reunion. That makes, it's old. You know, things need to be changed. Who in the world would have ever thought the Citizens Bank, who has been here for absolutely forever, the bank changed. They made changes, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to live up to what needs to be done in the city. Fortunately, we are blessed to have all of these wonderful milleniums that are taking over our city. I am so happy to see the changes, the new buildings, the people that are coming from, those people came from, I think, Florida, to put over a million dollars in our city? Come on. It's not everybody else's responsibility to make Sandusky a better place. It's our responsibility to make Sandusky a better place. You are welcome, you will be welcome, to come to an HRC meeting. In reality, in two years, we had three people that came to the HRC to voice a complaint. That's three people that came down. But these people ask, what do you do? We, I go to events, I give out flyers, I do everything I can possibly do to make people know that there's a HRC. But we can only do so much. So if we need to revamp, I'm all with it. But let's, if you want to be, this is important, you know now that there's all those commissions, you know now that there's all those boards, how do I get on them? You come down here and you get an application from that lady right there, Kelly, Kelly, and you just say, I'd like an application. You fill out the front of the application, and on the back, there'll be all these names of different things that you can do, and you might pick up two or three different things that you want to do. But do something. Do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Newell, Hancock, 1427 Marlborough Street, and I want to speak on the HRC. I have been a member of HRC for a number of, for three or four years, I don't know. And we've done a whole lot of nothing. Prior to being on HRC, I didn't even know it existed. And as Jennifer stated, that is part of the problem. But the revamping is something that I have problems with, because what little teeth the HRC does have is being stripped, and it's being done strategically and very purposefully. When the Andre Stockit thing happened, Twine, Murray, and Whoopser stood there and said, "HRC." And I think that was the last involvement that HRC had in that particular event. The decisions were made without consultation with the HRC, absolutely nothing, but it was trotted out as something that the city had. If it's going to be window dressing, we don't need it. If it's going to be a committee, then it needs some teeth, one or the other. If the citizens don't have a place to complain, then just say they don't have a place to complain. You have to deal with what you have to deal with. But if there's going to be real investigation of the city, then make a committee where you can do that. But don't give us window dressing, as my Angelou said. When people show you who they are, believe them. And, you know, once I've been lied to, I'm less likely to believe you. And that's what I feel about the city commission. You've lied.
Hello, everyone. I'm Blake Harris, 1125 Hollyrood Road. Actually, I'm just up here to speak on behalf, as the gentleman before me, I'm just here to speak on behalf of the younger generation. And just to basically inform everyone that there are, you know, younger people like myself, that not only care about this community, but that also are, you know, taking action. I have the privilege of working with Cornelius Hall, who is, who some of you may know, I know his father is a pastor, I believe. But he is actually in the Air Force, and he's stationed out in Idaho anyhow. He recruited myself, along with Jordan Evans, who I'm sure many of you are familiar with, as well as Spencer Patterson. And what we're looking to do is we have filed our Articles of Incorporation for a nonprofit, and that nonprofit is actually called NOW Sandusky, which stands for No Opportunities Wasted. Our mission, I'll read it, you know, verbatim, "Our mission is to provide youth and young adults with the resources to become successful leaders and entrepreneurs, to increase innovative concepts, economical, excuse me, economical empowerment, and small business ventures within our local community. Our vision is to establish our nonprofit corporation and 501(c)(3) status, host youth and young adult leadership and entrepreneurship conferences for our community, develop a state-of-the-art facility designed to assist youth and young adults with creative processes, business plans, startup capital, management skills, marketing strategies, financial literacy, et cetera." Speaking on behalf of myself, I am a local business owner of Ohio Drywall. I actually just went back into business for myself. What we, as a unit, I believe, offer is although we have similar backgrounds, we're still very diverse. Many of us are college educated, many of us are college dropouts. However, although our paths in getting to where we are today may be different, we still all share that same, that same common goal, and that is to, you know, give back to our youth and hopefully work to inspire other youth. You know, there truly is. I mean, there's a way out, and there is opportunity in our own backyard, in our own city. And so I know, for me personally, I would love to get more involved. This is actually my first meeting. I came, I cut my day short, honestly, just to make it, because I realized that I, myself, have to stop making excuses. Being too busy is not an excuse. You know, you make time for the things that you want, and for me, I want to see change. I not only want to see it, but I want to be, I want to play an integral part in it, as well as, you know, my counterparts that are involved in the nonprofit. So, yeah, I mean, so basically, you know, that's, I believe that's all I have to say. But, you know, as I said, there's definitely many of us who want to see change and who want to inspire that change, and hopefully really just change, just change the culture here in Sandusky. So I appreciate you all for giving me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else present wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone rush to the microphone. I don't want to cut anyone off who wants to speak. Then commissioners, if someone might care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff in support of recommending various pieces of legislation. So moved. A motion, second discussion. Lot of objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion approved. Commissioners, we have a consent agenda. Are there any items which, anyone wishes to place on the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Items one, two, and 10.
Those will be placed on the regular agenda and...
Chairman, I have one myself.
All right.
But it is the Youth Commission. 10.
10. Sandusky Youth Commission. 10 is Youth Commission.
Is it 10? Okay, I'm sorry. I would read from the note.
All right. Any others? So those will be, so commissioners, I have been chastised by the clerk for taking those up then, right away, totally follow up the process of recording legislation. So those will be taken up at the end of the meeting, then after our regular items. So that's how I'm told it's supposed to work, and Mr. Harris is indicating so as well. All right, then with the exception of items one, two, and 10, does someone appear to make a motion?
And just for the record, Mr. President, it's items A1, A2, A10.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll attend to it. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and declaring all ordinances and resolutions except for A1, A2, A10. As drafted and presented to City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinances and resolutions except for A1, A2, A10, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Then a motion, then second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray, would you like me to read them first?
Oh, I'll get the hang of this eventually, but apparently the problem is...
Third time was a charm, but that was tonight.
This is the reason we don't give the Irish a coffee break. It takes too long to retrain them. So two weeks between meetings, and I forget, so if you would, please.
All right. On the consent agenda, the first item A is amendments to numerous boards and commissions, including, I'm going to leave off the ones that we took off this evening, the ADA Advisory Board, the Audit Finance Committee, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Downtown Parking Committee, the Electrician Examining Board, Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals, the Plumber Examining Board, Residential Building Code Board of Appeals, and the Tax Incentive Negotiating Committee. Item B on the consent agenda is the purchase of six sets of morning Pride Tales turnout gear from Warren Fire Equipment for the Sandusky Fire Department. Item C is a change order, number one, for a time extension only with Moser Construction Incorporated for the Big Island Water Works, new powdered activated carbon system improvements, and fluorescents equipment for the Algal Toxin Plant Optimization Project. Item D is a resolution consenting to allow the Ohio Department of Transportation to complete their systematic sign replacement project. Item E is the annual codification to the city's code of ordinances with the Walter H. Drain Company. Item F is a contract with Republic Services for refuse and recycling collection on city property for the period of March 1, 2017, through February 28, 2019. Item G is an amendment to the legislation for the Erie Blacktop Field Fence Replacement Project at Ambeth Park. And item... And item H is a contract with Republic Services for the 2017 Yard Waste Collection Services for city residents.
Now Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want a clarification. She read in into that ordinance, I thought the ADA, which is came off consent, it's number one. If I'm not mistaken, she's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I scratched it. Yes, you're correct.
It needs to come off.
Okay, that's was not... All right, we took it off the consent agenda, so it's not right.
Exactly, she read it back in.
And it wasn't included in the motion, so we're good.
Okay.
We're okay.
So we're good. All right. Further discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the various pieces of legislation, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Those ordinances and resolutions are adopted. Item B, please.
One A. Moving on to the regular agenda, right?
She only did A. Yeah, we did the whole consent agenda.
Ms. Cresser, my understanding is that the preference between your office and the Law Department is that as opposed to taking up A1, A2, and A10, if those go to the end of the regular agenda item, am I mistaken?
For numerical purposes, they could if they were separate items. We can actually, if you want, Commissioner President, include them, create, make them E, F, and G of item one. What we are having, just for the for the citizens who are going to look at the minutes afterwards, when you put something from the consent agenda first, old item one now becomes item two. So there was confusion when people pulled it up on the website. So for convenience, it was easy to put it at the end. But since we're looking at subparts, my recommendation would be to put the three that we pulled from consent, the consent agenda with respect to boards and commissions, just make them E, F, and G under item one.
Okay. See it that way.
I am. So you're right, we'd go to one A first. My apologies, because this is my first time with this happening since I've been back, so.
All right, thank you. So Ms. Cresser, would you present item A once?
One A.
One A.
Would be an ordinance amending section four of ordinance number 02-155, establishing the Bayfront Corridor Committee in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of A of the ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Paul.
We have adjusted the membership of all the committees except this one, and I think it could be reduced from 15 to at least 10, perhaps seven, unless there's some really strong reason why, out of all the committees, we've adjusted that this one is somehow special. I don't understand.
Additional questions or comments? Or Mr. Harris, you look like you wish to speak.
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole. At one time, looking through all the minutes for the Bayfront Corridor, at one time, I think they had upwards towards 27 members, and they had no terms. So the proposal at the time was just to cap it at 15, so it doesn't grow back up to 27, because we're dealing with a lot of area concerns, citizens with respect to the Bayfront area that's being talked about. But the most important thing was to at least implement terms so that, like I said, they don't have life sentences serving the cities in Sandusky. But it was it was a number thrown out there. The reason why we presented this legislation to the Commission is so that you guys can deliberate and debate and discuss whether you feel it's necessary to reduce it. So you started then by asking a good question, and that's something that you guys would have to take up as a commission.
I guess I would say that it generally is not my desire to ask anyone to leave any existing boards and commissions, and I'm hoping there's a way we can find, even if we're consolidated, there's a way we can find room for everyone who wants to serve, because that's very valuable to have people serve on these boards and commissions. And if there are 15 active members, I've attended these meetings from time to time. They're pretty passionate, and I don't know that I really want to kick any of them off. That would be my thought.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, I don't think of this as kicking off.
I didn't mean to insinuate...
I know, you know, I know what you mean. I get it. Just the point is, for me, committees, I think, exist for a purpose, and I recognize that all the reasons for keeping all the people on this committee would apply to every committee that we have. So as we reduce and move these committees around, because the people on all these committees are passionate, and the things that you discuss, it just, I've been to Bayfront Corridor also, and they don't draw 15 people all the time. It does, and the committee doesn't need 15 people, as simple as that. They don't do, they aren't doing things that requires 15 voices. The meeting is open to the public. If it's a committee that's meant to give us some advice, I think committees should be of a size that they are manageable and ensuring that you get diverse opinions, but at the same time, where we just, where we get redundancy around the room of 15 people, it's just a mob that comes in and just talks. And that's all, and I'm not opposed, if you leave it at 15, that's fine, but I wanted to make that observation. There's no, this seems like the only committee that got to remain as is.
Mr. Green.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if Mr. Poole would consider somewhat of a compromise in this situation to be such that we allow the number to stay at 15 and then gradually move down to, say, a number that is acceptable at perhaps 10, simply through attrition, as members retire or choose to remove themselves from this board, that we allow the number to matriculate down to the number 10.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
That's that's fine with me. Just if members of this commission think it takes 15 people to make, to get advice from that committee, then you should vote that it needs to be 15. So how you get it down is fine. I just don't think 15 people is a productive committee.
Is there a motion at second?
I would consider that, I would consider mine as a motion.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second. And a motion at a second. Debate on the motion to amend.
Through you, President, with respect to the motion, just to clarify, are you going to, are you making a motion to amend to give a specific?
I'm making a motion to specifically take the number down to 10 through attrition, to not reduce, specifically reduce board members at this point, but allow as board members choose to come off of this commission to come down, come down to the number 10.
And just for clarification, what we did because this board didn't have actual terms, what we suggested is of the 15, designate five individuals who will have a term that expires in 2018, five whose terms expire in 2019, five who expire in 2020. So if I'm understanding your motion to amend, those who, whose terms are, who are designated as set to expire in 2018, come 2019, we will not reappoint them, we'll just have 10 members.
That is exactly correct.
Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That amendment is, becomes part of the ordinance. Through the discussion on the ordinance. Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance adopted item?
One B.
One B.
Is in ordinance amending part one administrative code, title seven, boards and commissions, by the addition of new chapter 187, Economic Development Incentive Committee of the Codified Ordinances, in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules of section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion at second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Paul.
I'm not really in favor of combining these boards. The revolving loan committee has a function that I think is completely, is different enough from this economic development incentive committee. Historically, if you look, the economic development incentive committee, they sit for the purpose of giving money away to businesses. Granted, it's intended, the intent is that we will foster development in the community and so forth, but the bent in the direction that committee is, is basically, is just gambling. It's a, I should say it's a risk. I don't want to say gambling, that's too strong. It's a, it's a risk, and they take risks. With that mindset, the revolving loan committee, I'd like for them to be a little bit tighter so that we get our money back. A little bit, a little bit tighter attitude and idea and closer look at who we give loans to and not. The revolving loan committee has had a lot of defaulted loans because we are a little bit risky about who we loaned the money to without, and not being very thorough. Also, I think that can best be accomplished with a different group of people. And I also would like for the community to have more involvement from different members of the community in all of our committees. And so I think that accomplishes that. We just need to be very, do a good job of selecting people for the for the committee that wants to get, accomplish the goals that we want. But at the same time, I think folks change, I think they have to change hats between those two committees, and I don't, I don't want the same people to do it, to be doing it. I don't think it's a good idea. Just my thoughts.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
With respect to Commissioner Poole, I think that this creates a lot of efficiency. I think we need to depend on our development department and through the Economic Development Incentive Committee. I don't see why they can't choose to be creative and put packages together for new business owners or existing business owners to figure out the best way to help them sustain their business, improve their business, or start their business. It's if we keep them separate, it just makes one more meeting that they have to go to, and another level of confusion for a business owner.
Additional questions or comments?
I would like to say, on behalf of the folks on the revolving loan committee, there's some very fine folks who serve on that committee, and we today have some very thorough procedures in place. I can't speak to what may have been done to cause loans to default 20 years ago, but I think we've always had some good people on that committee. And the the nature of these loans are such that these are the highest risk loan that's going to be on any project. These are unbankable loans. These are loans that come after anyone else who has any kind of security interest in any bank or other lenders. So we are going to have some losses, but I don't think it's a fault, certainly not of the courage, committee members, and in light of the procedures that they have today that are quite good. So I just wanted to make that observation. Yes, we may have made some mistakes in the past, but those are some things that haven't been cleaned up off the books that we have to deal with, and we're in the process of doing that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'm not sure that it's necessarily a burden whether the folks on the staff have to meet in a separate, meet in a different meeting, or they just extend the meeting that they're already at to go over requests for loans. Respect to what what my neighbor said, what my neighbor said, I don't think it's a duplication of effort. I also think for the good of the community, as I said, more eyes on the decisions of how our money is spent, more involvement in the community, we'll get more support from the community, get more trust, and just turning it over to staff is, I, it's made my point, that's what I think, so that's where it is.
Additional, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. Item, that ordinance is adopted. Item 1C.
Item 1C is an ordinance amending part one administrative code, title seven, boards and commissions, chapter 157, Human Relations Commission, of the codified ordinances of the City of Sandusky, in the manner and ways specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under first reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with section 13 of the City Charter.
I think the thought Twine expressed earlier, and I know it states that it's under section 13, the thought expressed earlier is this would be considered a two, two meetings?
Two meetings?
Yes.
First reading?
So if we, so what Ms. Cresser read was on first reading, which would be, so we would not want the section 13 taken.
Okay. I amend my motion to make it a first reading.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion at second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I guess I've been trying to consume everything that everyone said in regards to the HRC or Human Relations Commission, and I guess I'm picking up on a few things. By and large, the community is not completely connected to this issue. They're not completely connected to what's going on with this board. You know, when we do things as a city, I don't think we should do things without the consent of the people. And it seems to me that, yes, the board has been functioning, and the people that have served, I am grateful for their service, but we haven't really truly consented with them. We haven't really gotten the feedback of the members of the commission, rather, you know, the staff has gone about the way, their way to make these changes, not fully vetted with the people. So I can't see how we could move forward with some of these changes. You know, looking at the idea of having a nonprofit member of the committee, of this committee mandated, or mandating that we have two clergy, it's, it's, it's a good idea that we have those people involved in the committees, but to mandate that we have two clergy or two of the others, it doesn't really seem to mesh with what reality is. You know, clergy could join at any time. Nonprofit could join at any time. So I don't think that we should mandate that one member be this or that. Anyone that wants to join the Human Relations Commission should, because it's encompassing of everyone, and things change and ebb and flow. So let's make it inclusive where preferences are, that we'd like to have people from different backgrounds, but we can't make it mandatory that we have someone that's from one particular religious background. In relation to investigations, you know, I've heard the difference with some of the people saying that the committee should have investigative power. In my reading, I looked and I saw other HRCs that did have investigative authority, and I saw some that did their investigations in different ways, and some of them are close biased and some of them are not. And the way that I see it, you know, an investigation to, for subpoena is not necessarily a bad thing, it's simply a form of questioning. You know, it's not a sentence, it's a way that you derive a recommendation, you know, and if we have members of our staff on it, the police department, I trust them enough that they can be trusted with a subpoena and how to handle that process. So perhaps there's more guidance needed as to how to go about that, but I think it may be needed in order to get to the bottom of something. So if if the committee does go for it, it probably should have investigative powers so that they can do the work that they should be. This committee is, in fact, like someone else said here, it's human relations. It's not just the black people, it's not just white, it's everyone. It's there to serve as a guard to what we do as a city, for women, for men, for everyone, employment-wise, discrimination, and how we treat people. So I think the one of those things, or having investigative powers, is probably an important thing that we need to look at in the future. I just, I'm uncomfortable the way that it sits right now with the changes, because obviously some of the members here that have been a part of the organization don't agree with it, and some of the people here didn't realize that we had an HRC. So that in itself is indicative of a problem. I just, I, I'm uncomfortable the way that it sits right now with the changes because obviously some of the members here that have been a part of the organization don't agree with it and some of the people here didn't realize that we had an HRC. So that in itself is indicative of a problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wood.
Under one fifty-seven point oh-two D of the proposed amendment, under E it does talk about investigating, so that is included in that. As far as your suggestion that we shouldn't identify seats for certain positions, again, I think we need to take into account the diversity of the community and allowing opportunities for that diverse community to have a place at the table. So again, I think that it's important to have that, have that opportunity to have those seats available.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Paul.
So much covered here. I would first of all suggest that in regard to the diversity that, as Ms. Twine sees it, that diversity is well represented on forty-three other committees in this city to start with. The Human Relations Commission exists to provide a place for segments of the community that are not being treated fairly or equally, or they perceive that they're not being, being represented. And it's necessary. Human relations, changing the name to Community Relations Committee is, I think trying to, it waters it down. I, I don't have a better word for it. I think this movement here is, is a step in the wrong direction and quite frankly, and black lives actually matter, simple as that. And for you, for us to decide we're going to, for whatever the reasons are that you, that some folks find that the committee has not performed the way they want, to do away with it in this fashion is inappropriate. I would suggest that the, the reason a Human Relations Commission exists is to provide a voice for those who are underserved, and they may not always be black, but let's, let's face it, we're generally speaking about relationships for African Americans in terms of the problems we see throughout the country and historically what we've seen here. And so I don't think we have a major problem, but for those people who have problems, they need a place to go where they are comfortable. Two clergymen dictated to be on the committee. If the clergy had any interest, as Mr. Level said, they would have already been on the committee, simple as that. Assigning folks to this committee by fiat that we figure will be, God, this is difficult because we have a, we're trying to build a community in which we all get along and speaking in terms about this, it, it, it's necessary to say things that are rather raw. And assigning your favorite clergymen, who may not be as committed or as knowledgeable about the issues of race and the problems those folks have, is just generic and probably not the direction we want to go. There are going to be times that things are going to come up in this community that are unpleasant dealing with race and we need folks on these, on, we need a place to take that with people that are committed to solving it, not folks that are looking for a way to make it palatable to the community.
Additional comments?
I'm not done. I suggest that we, okay, I'll, I'll be done, I'll be done in a second, my five minutes are probably up. I suggest that we vote this down now and the city manager or whoever, get back with this Human Relations Commission and come up with a new format that is workable for us. And you can get into the details about subpoenas and so forth later. I will tell you, I do not think that our community needs to go that far, but should have the discussion so that every, so that everyone in this community leaves here and goes back out in the community, committed to working together and providing a place where everyone is comfortable living here. That's my thoughts. So I suggest we vote, I'm voting no.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I believe this is open to all. I, I don't know that we want to question whether clergy would be interested. We, we are voting on this on a first reading. There is still time for comment and I am still open to, during that timeframe, for comment on this issue.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
You know, touching back on what Commissioner Twine has said about the clergy, I believe we should be inclusive of all people in all faiths and backgrounds, but when you choose two clergy, then we leave out other religions. You know, we choose two nonprofits, we leave out other nonprofits. The city should never be in a position to exclude people. So if you leave it open to whomever wants to join, then it's sort of a first come, first served basis. We look at fairness and equality as a city, we don't look at exclusivity. So you can't say two clergy because today it'll be two, you know, one Jewish and one Muslim and then the Catholics will be here saying, well, where are we? You know, or the Protestants or the Jehovah Witnesses will be saying, well, what happened to us? And then where would we be? You know, so you can't do that. You have to be fair. We govern from center as my good friend, Commissioner.
Brady.
Brady, right, Brady. He's had the gray hair and I'm the one that's forget. So, so what I'm saying is, we have to look at inclusiveness rather than exclusiveness. So, and one thing that I've noticed through all this, this is the Human Relations Commission and yet we left out the human part of it. The people that are sitting here, they had no process in this, no part in the process. And you can see their sentiment there. So I don't think we should go anywhere with this. I don't think we should go anywhere without the, the commitment of the people. You know, these boards and commissions that we have are volunteer boards and we dare to push them out, we dare to push the very people that volunteer their time, their precious, precious and sacred time, to push them out of this committee? I don't think so, not as long as I'm a commissioner.
Mr. Brady would say that his hair is silver.
That's what I would say.
He's a silver fox, how about that?
Mr. Chairman. So I, I don't think that we're trying to exclude anyone. I think that talking about creating a Community Relation Commission versus, I mean, if it was called Human Relations Commission, either way, we, we need everyone to be included. We need to make sure that we're not excluding anyone when we're just trying to figure out who's going to be the representation of the actual commission. It doesn't mean that every single race, every single religion and every single walk of life, they can still show up to the meeting and they can still voice their opinion. We need the community to come together in our community, not just in one specific commission, but we need to make sure that maybe the nonprofits that we reach out to, to ask to be a part of this, could actually be helpful. There are some nonprofits that are wonderful organizations that may not be as influential or have the backing to help on the Community Relations Commission. So I think that some of the things are being taken a little too extreme for who are looking to be on the commission because every single person that stood up today, I would hope that you would show up to the commission meeting because everyone's welcome. And it was so fantastic to see everybody here tonight and to hear so many people say, it's not a white thing, it's not a black thing, it's a human thing and everyone should be included. Everyone, keep being included, keep showing up and let this commission help you if anybody needs help, not just one, one person or one group of people in the community, let's all work together with it. So I, I know there's a lot of changes in this and we're going through a lot of boards and commissions, but really, we're trying to have some efficiency with all of the decisions that are being made tonight, but still take care of our community. So I think that's, that's what it's more about.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Just a question for Ms. Lloyd. As we limit this to two people or agents of a nonprofit, what is being on the board of a nonprofit have to do with being able to address issues that this committee's formed for? I mean, what is it about being in a nonprofit that makes you have any opinion at all of any value that deals, deals with discrimination or mistreatment by, by some city department? I don't understand why a nonprofit brings that to the table.
Some, if I may.
And, and that's all, it's just nonprofits, just clergy, and you say it's not limiting, it is, it's just nonprofits, just clergy.
Ms. Lloyd.
That's four of the seven.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, there are some nonprofits there that can create a lot of support, that can give backing, that can give funding, that can help take care of these matters. So there, there are nonprofits, all types of nonprofits out there, but there are some that may be helpful, may not. But what is one person that has no connect, not a lot of connections, going to be able to do? They're all going to do it as a commission, they're going to do it together and they're also going to do it with the support of the people that show up to those commission meetings.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I think, I think, I, I think I got this. You tie this to money. This commission is a place that makes decisions about discrimination and poor or mistreatment that people receive. They're not buying anything. So a donation from a nonprofit, and, and you spoke to money, them bringing money to the table doesn't bring, is not talking about bringing wisdom, fairness, an understanding of those who are underserved. And when you limit it to a nonprofit, you say that there are some, I presume then that in, in the discussions you folks have had, that you've got somebody in mind. If you've acknowledged that all nonprofits do not have anything to contribute to this, then apparently we're, we're, maybe you should share that with us in terms of who you're doing that, but just because you bring money to the table doesn't, I'm not sure that's the purpose, what we want this commission to do. At least a segment of the community is not looking for that from this commission, not looking for a donation.
Ms. Wood.
The reason for having a person from a nonprofit, just for an example, the director of the CAC is connected with, with various people from the community seeking needs. And so that person's connection to people seeking needs gives them a level of empathy for what that person is, is experiencing. And so, and so someone that can have empathy sitting on the Community Relations Commission would have an ability to understand and maybe empathize with some of the issues and concerns that people are bringing to the Community Relations Commission. So that's the reason for having someone from a nonprofit. I stated earlier that it could possibly be someone from the NAACP. They of course deal with minority issues, in particular, black minority issues. And so, again, having a nonprofit entity assign the seat on the Community Relations Commission would again, bring people to the table that have experiences and have connections and pathetic and sympathy about some of the issues and concerns that could possibly be brought to the Community Relations Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
Ms. Twine makes a good point. Individuals from nonprofits can bring good valuable experience to these committees. But again, you're talking about individuals that bring experience. Why should we bring a nonprofit organization into this when we're only talking about individuals? That's what you're saying. You know, an individual that was a product of slavery brings a hell of a lot of experience to this. You know, an individual that was discriminated and beaten, a, a woman that was passed over for a job brings a lot of experience, but an organization does not. The people bring the experience. So what you're basically are saying, that we should still base this upon individuals that want to apply and not an, an organization.
Commissioners, I would say that there is a lot of passion about this particular piece of legislation, there are a lot of questions about how it is that the members should be appointed and what the criteria should be. So I would hope that between now and when we next take up this legislation, there would be some specific amendments offered for how it is the legislation might be approved. Here are the objections, but it's a little bit difficult to act on those without some specific amendment and there will be time for that at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we table this and get the proper consent of the people that come to these committee meetings, that live in this community and have invested their time and life and family in this community. I move that we table this until we actually get some consent advice from individuals that have lived this.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners, please?
Mr. Brady?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Poole?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Further debate on the legislation.
I move that we extend the debate.
We, you just did.
No more suspensions.
Yeah, no. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
I would suggest in, in response to Ms. Twine, number one, empathy isn't assigned, you know, empathy isn't assigned by your job description. It's very possible that you'll get someone from any number of nonprofits that have empathy, but at the same time, you're just as likely that they don't have empathy on the specific subject that we're talking about here. And limiting the, this to just them is, I think, a mistake. Likewise with clergy. So you have the votes, do what you wish. As I said, I recommend that we redo this, meet with the, and come up with something better, but I won't drag this on any further.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I wonder if I could ask Mr. Poole and perhaps Mr. Lockhart a specific question. So far, I, I've gleaned from this discussion that it appears that your objection to the legislation is based on the makeup of, of, of the committee. Now, you, you object to having clergy and you object to having nonprofits. Is, is your sole objection to the legislation simply to the makeup of the, of the board? Because if that's the case, early on in this, in this evening's, it's been quite a while now ago, we found a middle ground on changing the makeup of the Bayfront Quarter Committee. So I believe if your, if your objection is simply on the makeup of the committee, I can't, I can't believe that we cannot find a, a middle ground on this. Is, is that, is that your objection to the legislation is on the, on the makeup of the committee?
In terms of what I will vote for, that's, that's, that's a piece of this, yes, absolutely. The, I'm not sure, I'm sure where you're going to go to get, get this middle ground you're looking for, but no, I, limiting this to nonprofits and clergy, that's four of the seven members, I got three remaining members that shall be citizens, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know what else to tell you.
Mr. Free.
Ms. Lockhart.
In response to Commissioner Brady, it's not just about how a, you know, how the committee is made up, it's about the bylaws, it's about how it came about, it's about without consent of the people that are here. They're concerned, that's what I care about. So is there a compromise on the people? I don't think so. Who in here thinks that we should compromise on what people want? I don't. I think we should hear from them and then that's when we come up with our compromises and decisions and how we get bylaws and who should be on the committee. The people decide that and these are volunteers, that's the whole point. It's a volunteer committee without the consent of the volunteers and experienced people that have been on it.
Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners, please?
Didn't close the debate?
Is that a close of debates?
I'm not sure I do that.
Ms. Wood.
So I would be in support of changing the requirements of who goes to the composition of the commission, that's fine, but I'd ask Mr. Harris, can that be adjusted from the first reading tonight to what we vote on in a couple of weeks?
The purpose of the second reading is to provide opportunities for those types of discussions.
So we can continue to listen and possibly make changes for the next vote?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I have one more thing, just to, to Mr. Brady, I really didn't want to get in, too deep in the weeds in this, but the makeup of the committee is troublesome. More important than that, you got to the makeup of this committee from the purpose of changing its purpose. And so for the next two weeks, think about that. You watered it down to it does not address what the community expects it to be able to account, to what it exists for, which is to address concerns of a segment of the community that is it exists for, which is to address concerns of a segment of the community that is underserved at times and mistreated at times. Doesn't happen often, let's say that, because they don't meet on things a lot, but the point is, it is offensive doing away with that avenue for that to be addressed, and that's.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we are not eliminating that. That's not correct, it's inaccurate.
By changing, by changing the way you've restructured the membership does exactly that. Now, you kept, the words are nice on the paper, but that's really what we're doing here. Those folks got on your nerves, and they brought up stuff you didn't want to hear about it, and now we're just going to delete what they're able to accomplish, we're just going to move them away. I just.
If folks, let's have.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we have an orderly debate, and that's all I was trying to get. There's been, the motion is, the question has been called, is there a second? There was a motion to call the vote.
It's already been.
We're done, you can talk about.
Is there further, okay, very good. Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Infatically no.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
On the motion? Yep. We can talk about it.
Let's make clear, this was on the, I may have misspoken when I said motion.
This is to close the debate on this agenda.
I thought we were done talking.
I had, I had meant, I had interpreted that, well, we're going to have to back up, because I had interpreted that folks were saying they were finished debating this, and they wanted to just get on to the vote.
And that's what we're doing.
So this is a vote on the legislation itself.
On the motion and then the legislation.
Motion, then legislation. We just voted the motion.
Right, right. That's our thought.
Okay, all right. Did we finish voting?
Yes, and Mr. Waddington.
Okay, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
That legislation passes on first reading, and I hope that folks who feel that the composition of the committee should be different will offer substantive recommendations over the course of the next couple of weeks. So thank you all for a hearty debate. Ms. Cresser, would you present item 1C? I'm sorry, 1D.
Yes, 1D is an ordinance amending Part 1 Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions, Chapter 161 Planning Commission, and Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code Title V Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter 1161 Landmark Preservation, Section 1161.03 Establishment of Landmark Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full quarters of Section 15 of the City Charter.
Then a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'm not sure that I can completely support this. I would potentially be willing to try it. The planning and commission and landmark commission is going to create somewhat of an issue if the National Historic District goes into place, where anyone making certain renovations to their properties are going to have to wait for a very long period of time. Right now, our design review committee can meet when needed, whereas our landmark commission is only going to meet once a month. The other concern I have is our planning commission, as it stands right now, is not educated in the design review guidelines for the city or the National Historic Review Guidelines. There are some, but I don't believe all of them are well-versed in it.
Ms. Waddington, this more or less falls out of your orbit, and what we, you could remind us what we've done in the recent past, is we've created a landmark commission, but that then is the same as the planning commission in terms of the constitution of its members, and when they both have meetings, it is my understanding that one meets first, then they close that meeting, then we start another meeting. Could you explain the thought that goes behind the recommendation for this particular piece of legislation?
Through you, Mr. President. So you're correct, currently, we have a landmark commission, and we have a planning commission, but the members of the planning commission are on the landmark commission. So any property that is on the national register, either individually or listed within a district, goes to the landmark commission for exterior renovations. The design review committee currently reviews properties that are within the design review district. When they overlap, and there is a historic property that is within the design review district currently, that goes to the landmark commission. So I believe what Ms. Lloyd is referring to is that in the future, there will be a larger amount of properties that will fall within the historic district if the expansion goes through. So those properties would continue to go through what historic properties go through now, which would be landmark commission approval once a month.
Turn the questions to comments.
Mr. Chairman, I also have some concerns about this. The planning commission and the landmark, the landmark commission was established with the intention of planning commission simply covering this until you found people with the expertise and true interest in landmark buildings and so forth to have a committee. I don't see that combining these into one saves anything, other than the 30 seconds it takes for the planning commission to currently say, we've closed this meeting, I now open the next one. Secretary keeps separate minutes anyway, and I think for the purposes of not being confusing to the community, that we're better off with two separate committees. And we also, again, it gets back to what I said earlier, more people involved in the community and the things that we're doing, the more interested that we have in it, the better community that we have. I recognize, and for, just I want to say about all of these recommendations we received from staff, it comes from a perspective of effectiveness, which I, efficiency. It deals, because the staff much of the time has to support these committees, and so I see a tendency to see it as a good idea to combine committees and do other little things that shave a little bit of work off the edges. And I respect it, understand it, but thank you so much, Jake, for the work you did, Justin. But the other perspective from mine, as your representative that was elected, I'm looking more at, yeah, it may take a little bit more work on our part, but how are you best represented? It was intended the landmark committee be separate from the planning commission. It does take specific expertise and some passion, dealing with old buildings and making sure that we keep people on task for it, and quite frankly, adding that load long-term to the volunteers on the planning commission, I think is a recipe for disaster, because it just, it just, we should, this needs to be separated, and we need to spread the workload.
Mr. Harris.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, this is a perfect example of why we presented this legislation to you for a debate. Believe it or not, Angie and I, along with Casey Sparks, we had reservations based upon discussions that we had today with the historical society down in Columbus, and as the agenda was out, we wanted to gauge your position with respect to this, because the planning commission has been functioning as the landmark commission for some time now. But you wouldn't offend us one bit if you said they need to be separate commissions. This is exactly why we're having this process, and there would be nothing wrong with it. We just felt that statute, I mean, if you look at the legislation, the two commissions were just meeting back-to-back. The proposed amendment basically gave the landmark, I mean, the planning commission the powers and responsibilities of the landmark commission, because they've been functioning in that capacity. One of the concerns that they had in Columbus was the same concerns that both Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Poole brought up. So this is an example of a piece of legislation that if you guys voted down, we wouldn't be you and her feelings.
Mr. Chairman, I have to agree with Mr. Poole, having more people involved does create a lot of, I know, right? Create a lot of passion within the city, but I would ask, what would your opinion be of, we've worked very hard over the last couple of years of rebuilding the design review committee to make sure that they, the people that do sit on that committee has done the research of the design review guidelines of our city and the National Historic Could we combine those committees, and what are your thoughts on that?
It becomes the same. I'm not sure if, this is just me personally, I'm just, they're separate decision-making decisions, and I think you should have more separate commissions, and I don't see the efficiency in combining them together, because you have, still have to adjourn one and start the other one. There's just no efficiency. If you find that, and I suppose if you presented to me who was on the design review committee, and I felt real comfortable that said, you know, these are the people I would want to put on the landmark committee, I might say, yes, okay, but honestly, I need to talk to Justin afterwards. And again, with this, combining with the design review would not do away with the concerns that the commission at the state has any better than combining with planning, would it?
Correct. I think the concerns that they have in Columbus is that it should be a standalone one, if at all.
And that's the point. I'm not, talk of it in terms of how much efficiency you're going to have by combining, to make it sound like it's a good idea for the people to do it that way.
Okay.
What do we gain?
I think I'm going to follow Mr. Harris's new recommendation, and vote this down. That's how I'm going to vote. Further questions or comments? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
But.
No, it's on the motion.
Oh, it's on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lloyd?
Then yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Waddington?
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
That legislation fails.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
You'll find out who's swimming naked when the tide grows out, I guess, for that one. I'll leave that girl. You can throw that over here tonight.
Commissioner President?
1E.
We're going to call it 1E.
1E, which is formerly a 1.
Correct.
Would you present that, please?
Who item 1E is? An ordinance amending Part 1 Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions, Chapter 155 Fair Housing Board, Chapter 159 ADA Advisory Board of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under first reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm with, we accept the minutes, or minutes, accept, adopt this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full quarters of Section 13.
First reading.
First reading, at first reading, correct.
Second.
It's been a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, okay, this deals with the ADA committee. I asked of a question, does the fair housing committee have to exist? Is that required?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, it does have to exist by law. We have to have it in place with respect to fair housing complaints. It's statutory required, but we just haven't had any complaints.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would, and this is the same way I've dealt with dealing with Human Relations Commission. The ADA board is a board that serves a good purpose, represents a segment of the community that tends to be underrepresented, and it goes back as far, since the ADA law was passed, and we didn't follow it very well, up to the present. And for example, I was, let me move on, essentially, I don't think it should be combined. The members of the ADA board are passionate about what they do, it's a specific thing that, the specific thing that they're here to work on and focus their attention on, and fair housing has no relationship to that whatsoever. I suggest that we just appoint a fair housing board, and I'm not sure what the law requires. The fact that we seldom have ever used it, then it'll just be on the books, but the people on the, and I've served on the ADA board for, I think, two or three years as a liaison, and I assure you, they have no, I would expect they have no interest in fair housing or knowledge whatsoever. You need to find someplace else to dump fair housing if you, if that's how you feel about it.
Questions or comments? Would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance space?
On the motion?
I thought we was.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
On the ordinance.
Sorry.
That's okay, keep checking on me.
Anybody want to volunteer to do these minutes for me? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item?
1F.
1F.
Is an ordinance amending Part 1 Administrative Code Title V Officers and Departments, Chapter 145 Employee Provisions, Section 145.05b Monthly Salary Ranges Administrative Confidential Management Supervisory Judicial and Professional of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under first reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, would you go over the makeup of this committee and what they do? Someone, whoever.
Mr. Harris.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, the Administrative Benefits Review Committee, the only change that, basically, it's a committee that deals with specific raises to the admin portion of the city, I mean, the city employees. The only proposed change that we're making to this is that the way it read, just for clarification, it said it was comprised of the four charter officers and the commission president, based upon the recent charter change, the law director and finance director are no longer, and city manager, we're no longer charter employees, so this amendment was solely presented to clarify what the makeup should be legally in terms of our actual roles. We met with respect to when we proposed the 2% pay raise increase for the admin portion under Section 145, Commissioner President Murray, I mean, Murray, Hank Salloway, myself, city manager, and Commissioner Clerk, Kelly Cresser, met to discuss it, but prior to that meeting, it just read four charter officers, and Hank made a valid point that we should clean up our books to at least designate the proper party. So I think the spirit of the rule required the city manager, law director, and finance director to be part of the committee, but as it read, we thought it needed to be amended.
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
I'm going to vote no on this, and the reason is that if you notice what he just described, is, okay, it's accurate, the law director, finance director are now directors, no longer charter officers, no longer report to us, and this law, as it's written, they set their own benefits. It doesn't, they decide on their own raises and all that he described, and it does not, it shouldn't be that way. We should, the citizens deserve a little better than that. I don't, it wasn't right to begin with.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Well, what I was going to say is that this committee has existed for, I think, a couple of decades, and all it does is it makes a recommendation to the city commission, and it doesn't have any authority on its own, and all this is doing is cleaning up the legislation that contemplated charter officer positions that don't exist anymore. So it meets once a year, and with rare exceptions, it meets once a year. That's all it does.
And, if I may, I'm sorry, through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole, to also add to that, there's also, all we do is provide recommendations, because unlike the ASME, unlike the fire union, unlike the police union, there's no one who's going to negotiate or ask for raises for the admin staff. So we meet, we provide, we debate, discuss it, and then we present it, not only. So we meet, we provide, debate, discuss it, and then we present it. Not only before we even get to you, we have to present it to the Finance Committee, who then approves it, who then presents it to you as a City Commission. So even when they were charter officers, it still impacted their salaries. So, I mean, it's just a recommendation.
I recognize it's a recommendation, and again, it's just maybe I'm a little detailed. In the past, those people making those recommendations worked for us. It don't work for us anymore. Makes a difference in terms of taking... It's technical. Not that I don't trust you all the time, but I recognize you don't work for me. All right? It's like, it's as simple as that. Appropriately, I think, protecting the citizens, what we should be looking at doing that is probably the City Manager and two or three commissioners, because we're the ones that are responsible for how much money it is. See, when you come and get our approval, it's based on a paragraph of what you tell me in terms of background and detail, which is really what we had here. All of this information comes to me Thursday before we vote on it, and it comes in a format of, do you have any questions? Well, I only have what you have. I suggest that in terms of dealing with your own raises, that we should take a little more interest in that. That's all, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I think Commissioner Poole has some valid points there. I do know that... Well, let me ask. Is this a mechanism for addressing raises for basically those staff that are exempt from the bargaining unit?
Correct.
Okay. I think, yes, I kind of somewhat agree with Commissioner Poole that maybe there should be a couple of commissioners, city commissioners, on that group to discuss, you know, the raises or lack thereof or whatever, in line with... And I know that this is done at the state level, that exempts don't automatically get a raise if the contract members do. But there is a mechanism, and I'm not sure what that mechanism is, that something has to be basically enacted in law to approve that exempts people get a raise. So I don't think that there should be a problem with maybe a commissioner or two participating on that committee.
Is that a motion to amend?
Yes.
Second.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Twine and Commissioner Poole, just for clarification on your motion to amend, the only thing I wanted to add to and for purposes of the reason why I believe legally the Finance Director should be involved in a committee is because he's the one who knows exactly how much money we have in the bank, irrespective whether the raise is zero, 1%, 2% and whatnot. The reason why the Law Department's involved is because we have obligations under Section 145 with respect to codified responsibilities that we have to our admin employees. So that's why I'm involved, not because I'm worried about what my raise will or will not be. It's usually for the 47 other individuals specifically. Now, I think it makes sense for what both of you have said to add one or two more commissioners to the committee, but that's the reason why I think they called it charter officers, but I think that the spirit of the rule was to have the Finance Director, who knows exactly how much money we have in the bank, and the Law Department involved in that committee.
I don't... I did not take Ms. Twine's motion to alter that at all, but before we got a second, I wanted to ask if you had a mechanism by which those other two would be selected. Should they be the senior members, not by age but by service? I mean, Mr. Waddington in that case. Not have service.
Selected by a commissioner.
Okay. Is that the motion? Is that the second?
The second, yeah.
Are we clear on what we did? Okay.
No, two.
The motion is to add two commissioners on top of those already on the committee to be chosen by the commission.
So a total of three commissioners?
Very tall, right.
President plus two.
Right.
Say this again.
No. Two commissioners. You're on there, so that would be an additional... The City Commission President is already part of that.
And there's two more.
Add one additional City Commissioner to that group.
Okay.
So...
That's the motion. The motion is to add one. Is there a second to that motion?
What do we add?
Add a few commissioners.
Add one.
No. Mr. Chairman, let me suggest... Okay, I think I know where you're at. Do we... Are we going to have some more discussion or no? I just want to make a point.
Yeah.
Let's just... We can't have a debate. Let's get a motion.
We gotta have a motion before we debate the motion. We got a motion at second. So the motion is to add one.
Okay.
Okay, now we can debate the motion. Amend.
Okay. It's not about debate. It's just to reply what Mr. Harris said. I understand what you said in terms of being attending and being part of that committee. You provide information and as does the Finance Director, keep us on track. There's a difference here now. As you've restructured it with one, I now still have a three to two vote on their own benefits.
Kelly's on, too.
Okay, now it's four to two.
As far as through the Commission President, the other commissioner, still have two out of the group that report to you and then two who don't, so you have a majority of commission responsive staff, not that we aren't all responsive.
Yeah, yeah. Recognize what I'm saying. Those two folks voting on their own benefits when all their purpose in this meeting should be is to provide their expertise. Now, they should be there, I agree. A voting member, not necessarily. And I'm being picky here about this because if, when you two are gone and I'm gone, the citizens are at the mercy of whatever talent the next commission's hired. I don't have any concern about you folks, but that, this is just, structurally is not set up right.
Okay, there is a motion to amend to add one.
Right.
And that's the issue that's on the floor right now. Any further discussion on that particular motion? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the role on that motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes, I think.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Okay, that is a legislation is amended as indicated. Now, back on the legislation.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
No. Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on first reading.
As amended.
As amended. Now we go to one G. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you go there quickly, I want to make... We continually report or add substance to a decision by indicating that the Finance Committee says it's okay. I want to suggest that for my purposes, the Finance Committee tells us that money exists in the bank account, has little to do with whether or not the policy of what we spend it on is appropriate or right. They don't add any credence to spending any money. They just say it's in the account. They count our money. So just wanted to say that. The folks tend to say Finance Committee said it was okay.
Well, they have a broader system as possible just to make sure we've got proper parts and procedures in place and they supervise the state audit.
No, the point is in terms of deciding whether I spend money on A, B, C, or D, the Finance Committee saying it's okay has little value about us setting priorities is what my point is.
Item one G, please.
One G is an ordinance repealing Part One Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions, Chapter 173 Sandusky Youth Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under first reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
It's been a motion at second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Lockhart.
In hearing the comments from the public in regards to the youth commission, I cannot see that we would get rid of the youth commission. You know, youth commission doesn't impact our budget, but it does enhance lives of individuals that want to undertake in it. It enhances the lives of the youth in the community, and before us, we have individuals that are willing to take this up, to take this commission up. And so in looking at, you know, the purpose of it for the youth of Sandusky, I can't see why we wouldn't give them all the opportunity to do so.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be taken off and be spoken to. I don't... I recognize that as it's written, that it needs to be essentially repealed as written because it's not functional. But before we do that, I would like to hear from the staff, what is this, what are we going to go from here to address the, all the people in the community that have expressed an interest in helping? And if I'm comfortable with that, what you guys are going forward, then it's like I'm all on board to repeal it as it's written.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we think that a strong movement to reach out to and support and nurture and mentor the youth is critically important. We have had, and I know Commissioner Waddington has brought this up and has worked with Talon Flor, Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator, at efforts to engage youth in the city. I will, and it was based on the lack of functionality or never having really been fleshed out of the past youth commission that got to the repeal. What I will say is I have been moved tonight, and actually by some folks that reached out to me yesterday, as some of this stuff came out on Facebook, is that in addition to our own staff, I do think there is great value in adults who are working with youth or have a passion to work with youth as parents or teachers or pastors, et cetera, on a day-to-day basis. And so I do think there is value of a restated youth commission of some sorts. That would be the adult guidance to groups of youth that we would bring in, because I believe what Commissioner Waddington and Talon were envisioning was more along the lines of selecting a certain amount of youth from the Sandusky City Schools and potentially the Sandusky Central Catholic Schools each year, participate in different activities and mentorship. But the flesh of that program and the guidance and mentorship, I think, would be greatly enhanced by having a group of adults and maybe some youth as well on a commission that helped set up what that program is and provided us the support over the course of the year. So I don't believe that we have the details on what that youth commission would look like, but our intent, I think, would be to bring you back relatively quickly to oversee that program, is to have a makeup of a group that would be appointed and get together, appointed by the commission and get together. That would be made up of folks like Pastor Sherman and others that have spoken out tonight, so.
I wonder if we shouldn't table this for the time being. Would someone care to make such a motion? Oh, Ms. Harris?
Commissioner President, may I, under new business, and we've been here quite a bit, but I still think it's worth noting and hopefully you guys remember at the end, what I recommend is just for clearing the books, you could still vote on this and then make a motion directing the City Manager, whether it be Law or whoever the city staff necessary, to meet with maybe Mrs. Hall. I always know her as Mrs. Pearson. She's my cousin, but...
Sorry, you've been outed.
To maybe meet with her to get a hold of that Baltimore legislation with regard to the youth commission. So I don't think table it. I think table it would probably complicate. I think you still vote on this motion and then under new business, direct us to present to you within a timely fashion, new legislation with regard to the youth commission.
All right. Further discussion on the motion, the legislation. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the... Is this a first reading?
Yes.
Would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. It's particular to the folks who came to speak up in favor of that. It has been more abundant. It would reactively. Okay. Item two. We're about to invoke the pizza and beer rule. We haven't gotten there in a while.
Eric's in the audience.
Item number two is an ordinance amending Part Nine Streets Utilities and Public Services Code Title V Other Public Services, Chapter 955 Solid Waste Disposal, Section 955 dot one five Limitations on Curbside Placement of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the... Is this first reading?
Looks like it.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
First to fourteen.
Is it fourteen?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I forgot. It's an amendment to legislation under first reading. Correct.
First reading.
Do you need me to repeat that?
No, there's been a motion to adopt it on first reading. Second. Motion second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I think this is one of those things where residents ask and we're delivering. I would ask Mr. Alasko just to give a brief description of what this is.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Lloyd. What's being proposed is a small change, but I think a change that'll benefit a significant portion of the residents in Sandusky and one that's been asked of the city over the last couple of months. We get a lot of requests into our Code Enforcement Division. We've gotten some requests through the Sandusky Register, and we've also gotten some requests through specifically serving our seniors. And that request is right now, folks cannot do curbside placement before 6:00 PM the day before that they... The day before their refuses to be collected. What we've heard from folks is particularly in the winter months and with the seasonality, that it is very dark outside when folks are putting their trash out at 6:00 PM. And also, we know that the weather takes a bit of a dip as well. So what's being proposed is for the months October through March, that folks would be able to put their trash out on the curbside beginning at 4:00 PM, which would help with the seasonality and particularly the visibility to help folks with things such as safety concerns, et cetera. So we're proposing to move that up for two hours for six months out of the year for folks.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Present item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement, purchase the former American Crayon property located at 1706 Hayes Avenue and identified as parcel number 57 dash 01278 dot 000, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this legislation. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Commissioners, comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Let's stick with Commissioner Brady. Commissioner Twine?
I am reluctantly going to vote yes on this. Mr. Guy Tan, I believe, I can't find the right word for this, took advantage of us in allowing him to tell us that he was going to clean up the property and put it in a condition that it's not in now. I believe that we need to try to get this property cleaned up as soon as possible. I don't want to have to look at it any more days than what I have to, but I do want to go on record and say that Mr. Guy Tan used us and went in, got the resources out that he wanted to get, and then left us high and dry. But I will vote yes on this because I want it cleaned up.
Additional comments, Cresser?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Brady?
Mr. Waddington?
Number one, it's a health and safety issue. How would you like to welcome to Sandusky and drive in and look at that? Okay, we did the Esmond Dairy. We're looking at the winery, a few other spots, TSC Foundry. But if you come down, we've got the high school there, and we've got one of the top hospitals in Ohio. So welcome to Sandusky and look at that. And I'm sure all of us here have heard the same thing. What the hell is going on? I drove by there a lot this winter. I didn't see a lot of action, so I'm going to be a yes vote. I'll pay the 150. Level that. I don't care if we throw grass seed on it and cut it twice a month. It's going to look better than what it does now. That's right, man.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I'm not as excited about this as everyone else is. The concept of giving Mr. Guy Tan $150,000 for that property, I think at the last time we met, there's tax delinquency on there, and I think there's other ways to get the property. We worked through the Treasurer's Office. We've done that before. I'm not in a rush. This property's been a mess for, what, 40 years? Another six months is not going to be a significant issue. I'm just not prepared to pay him for that, pay him $150,000. I would think that the money's better spent. Why don't you spend it, go over to the people on Rockwell Street, spend $150,000 making their neighborhood better, whether it's on the streets or whatever, and we'll wait our time and get that property. The... the streets or whatever, and we'll wait our time and get that property the way that we know it ultimately is gonna happen, because if he's walked away, he's not gonna pay his taxes, and we'll ultimately get it. The way we get multiple other properties, giving him $150,000 on top of everything else just does not sit with me, because it's not necessary. As long as the property's been there, folks have talked about it being a safety hazard, a danger to kids, and I think we have absolutely zero instances of problems, other than at some point in time when the building was up, you had people, migrants living in it, I had heard, but nobody got hurt. So that urgency to dip into our coffers for another $150,000 to just give to someone seems to me to be a little bit much, because we have eyesores in other places in the community, and this one can wait, the money can be better spent.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Burd.
You seem unwilling to give my gavel back. And I do want it back at some point. You might, I might suggest in the interim, that you ask the law director to walk us through the likely scenarios and the problems, and why it is that it's recommended that we not let this go through tax foreclosure, because there is an outstanding order, which is a litenable issue, that is, to tear it down, and then there are issues beyond that. If you don't mind if he explains that, please.
Mr. Harris, would you be so kind to walk us through the intricacies of this legislation?
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Brady, I'll walk you through some of the legal pitfalls, I'll hand the imaginary gavel over to Matt Lasco to talk about some of the contractual financial concerns that he has with dealing with this property. But the first and foremost issue that you have with regard to a foreclosure action is that if anybody files foreclosure actions, sometimes they take upwards to one to two years to even resolve. So from the standpoint that this commission has taken a stance that they believe that American Crayon is a hazard, a safety concern to the individuals in the community, whether it's been a hazard or a safety concern for 20 years or only two years, we went on record as a city saying that we have concerns with the state of the building. So the emergency hasn't dissipated. If we were to go through a foreclosure and file a foreclosure action, and hope that we're going to foreclose based upon delinquent taxes, there's always the equitable right of redemption in which, one, up until the time that the jury set at trial, they can go and pay their bill, or secondly, they could, they can do something similar to what we experienced in another community property, and that's go down to the auditor's office and enter into a payment plan, whereby the auditor will allow him to pay a certain amount of money a month, and we're in basically the same situation that we're in. Right now, we have, we entered into an agreement whereby they were supposed to demolish this property by a certain period of time. The other issue that you run into if we were to pursue a breach of contract claim, is a counterclaim or a temporary restraining order preventing us from demolishing, demolishing the property altogether. We thought, and I'll hand this over to Matt, who's done a tremendous job of even trying to negotiate this value, just so the community's aware, we approached him at one time, and Matt can elaborate on this, to try to alleviate these concerns that we have with American Crayon, and asked him what his purchase price was, and I think he said somewhere like $2 million, so, and we abruptly ceased to communicate with him in that regard. I know that Matt has negotiated over an extended period of time to give this drop dead, or this walkaway number of $150,000, and we're not doing it willingly, but I think, I just came from the private sector, I would advise any of my private clients, before I came to the public sector, that even though it aches you in your stomach, to pay someone $150,000, this actually makes the most business sense from a legal perspective. But Matt can.
I, yes, through you, Commissioner President, to the rest of the commission, just a couple of random thoughts, and I would certainly piggyback on a lot of what the law director stated, and what I'll say is, our county treasurer's been tremendous in pushing properties through the foreclosure process, but what we also know, because they also want revenue, there's a very high likelihood that with a little bit of spare pocket change, that the owner could enter into a payment plan, which would buy him probably 24 months, which quite honestly, I don't believe is acceptable. I don't believe it's acceptable that it's taken this long at this point. And to Mr. Poole's point, you know, I agree, it's been a blessing that that property has not fallen, but because it hasn't, is not a foregone conclusion that it won't, and I don't think we want to risk that happening and when that day happens. And I would also say, if we speak to the residents on Rockwell, and we speak to the residents on Hayes, and we speak to the leadership at Sandusky Schools, I think they realize it's a safety concern, it's part of the reason why there's for sale signs right across the street on Rockwell, and right across the street on Hayes Avenue. So I do think it's something that we have to take care of immediately, and it's something that we've been very aggressive with, with GNC Foundry, 425 Warren, Wisteria Hills, Sanoco, et cetera, soon to be Myers Winery. We're taking this very, very, very seriously, and this just is next on our list. And I'll also say, you know, it pains me to pay someone as well, but I feel beneficial that a lot of that is going to go to pay the delinquent taxes on the property, and it's also gonna go to pay a couple mechanic's liens on the property, so it's not $150,000 into Mr. Guy Tan's pocket. I also do know that we've gotten a recent appraisal for GNC Foundry, which is a very comparably sized property at six acres, that appraisal came in right around $140,000, which is right around what we're proposing to purchase this property for. And then I'll also say, just sort of in closing, you know, there's a state agency, the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, which has a neighborhood initiative program to purchase and demolish properties in many communities of which were beneficial to have, about a $1.1 million grant to demolish properties in Erie County, and with that grant, they provide the county land bank $5,000 to basically pay people to get out of town, because it is that important for us to demolish these properties, and if we've got to align someone's pocket a little bit to get them the heck out of town, I think that's something we have to do, so that's where the recommendation's coming from.
Thank you, Ms. Lasco, and Ms. Harris. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I think most of you know where I stand on this, on this piece of legislation. These are painful things to have to spend a hundred, to have to vote on spending $150,000 to buy this property, and yet a month or two from now, I'm going to have to do the painful thing to vote on spending maybe a half million dollars on cleaning it up. So if you don't like this piece of legislation, you sure aren't gonna like the next one. That doesn't make it any less reasonable to do. I don't see how we as a community can preach blight elimination and continue to allow something like that to stand. That does not just affect the city's largest employer, Firelands Hospital, but affects every child that passes underneath that subway, going back and forth to school. And that's a lot of people. It affects every visitor that comes to the city and uses a main corridor, going in and out of Sandusky. Yet it's painful to spend this kind of money, and governments have to go down some pretty dark road sometimes, and when you get to the end, sometimes you have to turn around. But it's timed across this bridge, and it's time to deal with this issue and put this behind us. I'm hoping that these legacy issues don't outlive me, but it doesn't look good at this point.
Mr. Poole.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, just to be clear, I'm only discussing about the prop, what I consider to be the best use of the money. I do want to ask you, how much is, what the taxes are on that property offhand?
Taxes of delinquent?
No, no, well, I know, the delinquency was like $15,000, is that what it is? Is that a half year, or?
I don't believe that's a half year, I don't know that right off the top of my head, but I believe it's between five and 10 grand annually, but I'd have to check that.
Five and 10 grand annually, okay.
I believe so.
I wanted then to address the concept of this, the 24 months you said it would take. What we're dealing with here is, this individual has walked away from the property, has absolutely no use for it, okay? We're talking about $150,000 out of our pocket that goes into his. It doesn't make me feel better that it just goes into paying the taxes, because it's still my money that pays his taxes and pays his liens. Now, if we, if the treasurer acts with him, and even if he gets a payment plan, the payment plan requires that he get on a payment for the, let's say, the amount that he owes now, but in July, when his taxes come due again, he's required to pay the full amount that he owes to keep it current, or it goes immediately into the next step, which means we can take, they can take the property. So it's not just an automatic 24 months as you have described. We get a payment plan on, let's say, the 15 he owes now, which is fine, that's back stuff, but come July, he has to maintain the payments and pay off in total to be in compliance with the agreement. So this is a short wait, this is four months, before we get, start moving forward on taking this property, and his decision to go into litigation that you make is based on how long it takes to eat up his $150,000 that we're offering him. So he might, I suggest we force him to just walk away, or offer him a whole lot less.
Mr. Harris.
Through you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole, and I apologize, I probably didn't clarify it. When there's a tax delinquency at the county level, Trevor and I will not be the ones filing the foreclosure action, that would actually come from Kevin Baxter's office.
I recognize that.
So for, and I could tell you that, people have gone, at least at the county level, some people have gone two or three years in delinquency before they even file a foreclosure action. So just because four months from now, they default on a payment plan, Mr. Baxter has a strong caseload and he has a civil attorney, but we have no guarantee and no control over how fast the county's gonna jump with respect to filing the foreclosure action. So I think it feels, it's a city problem, even though the county would be handling it, and we can't hold their feet to the fire. That's, and I didn't add that, I apologize.
And he is, Mr. Chairman, I recognize you are correct. I would hope, since the county has discretion with what they do, that we would get some assistance about prioritizing what they do, because that is a true statement, I recognize. They get to, and we're not holding their feet to the fire, but I would certainly hope that we would get a little bit, a little bit of help on something this important to the entire community.
Mr. Harris, I wonder if you might address a related issue that comes up sometimes. My wife, who's a very sweet person, wanted to just wring this guy's neck, in the sense of, you know, he's left this community with this eyesore and expense, and why is it we can't go after that man and get out of him our costs of demolition and, you know, everything else? Could you explain that, please? Because being an LLC is something that you, when you were on the dark side in the private sector, would have recommended to your clients.
Through you, Commissioner President, to answer your question, when I was on the dark side, on the defense side of things, some people always say the biggest criminals are corporations, but corporations are formed to protect personal liability. So even though Mr. Guy Tan is the problem, what happens is, he forms a LLC who purchases the property, so with respect to going after him individually, there's a lot of hurdles that we would have to overcome, but more importantly, the company has no assets, is not in existence, so we have two issues. One, we would never be able to collect on a dissolved company, and second, I think he would spend, now that I think about it, and we're talking more, and the dialogue, I actually think the process becomes almost three or four years before we actually get finality on a foreclosure, because I actually think we'll, the county at least, will spend seven to nine months trying to obtain service on the statutory agent that probably is no longer in existence.
Thank you. Further, Ms. Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman, I would say one thing, we're all in agreement that no one wants to give Mr. Guy Tan a penny, but for what he's done, saying he's going to demolish his property, and he does, and he doesn't follow through, we also don't know the stability of the structure that's there, so the longer we leave it there, the more dangerous it could become, so I'm gonna vote yes on this, I would rather just Mr. Guy Tan not come back and visit anymore.
Probably a good idea. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Chris, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes, and let's all hope that Mr. Guy Tan finds a very warm place in eternity. Would you present item number four, please?
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Berdu and Company LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for the CDBG fiscal year 2016 Residential Demolition Project Number Two, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second, discussion? Mrs. Chris, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the grant agreement with Daly's Limited in relation to the property located at 104 to 110 Columbus Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second, discussion?
I wonder if we could ask, Mr. Murtory, just one very simple question, is, I don't remember ever doing this before, is this unusual to amend, to add more money to a deal?
Through the Commission President, Chief Commissioner Brady, this is the first time we have done this, so to answer your question, yes, it is somewhat unusual, they did face an increase in cost due to additional lighting, and also an upgrade in some of the materials, and they asked if they could bring it back to the commission, or to the committee, so I brought it to the committee. I worried for the committee, and they said, we can do it unanimously, and I'm happy.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Chris, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a transportation services agreement between the City of Sandusky and First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, in relation to the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second, discussion? Mr. Ranaldson, it's been a long evening, but this is a very important contract, and I think it would prove all of us to hear you for a few minutes about how it is we're going to be able to provide the best transit service for our residents.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began this process in November of 2016 to determine who would be our next service provider for the next three to five years. Through this process, we determined that First Transit of Cincinnati, Ohio, would be the best fit for us, and we feel that they will allow us to take more pride in the system that we do have, we think they will elevate the quality of service that we do have. We think that as we grow, or if any challenges we may face in the future, they will be the best partner for us after the next three to five years.
Could you explain to the commission a little bit about the selection process that you want to check?
Yeah, absolutely. So in November, we released our RFP in national, both nationally and locally, and we received responses from the three largest transit providers in the country, actually in the world. Through our interview process, we narrowed it down to two companies that we thought would be a good fit for us, and in final analysis, our committee of five members of the community who have experience in both RFPs and also in transportation, determined that First Transit would be the best fit for us, not simply based upon price, but we truly believe that they have the experience and expertise to actually deliver what they promise, which has been an issue in the past.
Okay, thank you, and so this is, what's being proposed tonight is a three-year agreement with an option for two consecutive one-year amendments, or extensions, correct?
That is correct. And in final analysis, our committee of five members of the community who have experience in both RFPs and also in transportation, determined that First Transit would be the best fit for us. Not simply based upon price, but we truly believe that they have the experience and expertise to actually deliver what they promise, which has been an issue in the past.
Okay, thank you. And so this is, what's being proposed tonight is a three-year agreement with an option for two consecutive one-year amendments or extensions, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Randleston, can you tell me how, how far along or where we are with the schedule of making the changes for the disabled that will require on-demand service? Have we instituted that yet? Are we going to delay that? Where are we at with the mandatory applications for disabled individuals that will require on-demand service? Or pick up at home, I should say, make it simple.
Through you, Mr. President. We are delaying the rollout of pair transit service until we get the new service provider in place. At the time, when I came in front of the commission and said that we would do this at this certain time, we faced other challenges. And now, we think it's best that we hold off until we get the new service provider in place, and their system is up and running, to implement this in the most efficient and effective way.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Randleston. That, not a lot of work got, went into getting us to this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase playground equipment and associated surfacing from David Williams and Associates Game Time of Alliance, Ohio, for Foxborough Park.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Note that is presented as on first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poehl.
How many trees are we cutting down? Oh, playground's okay, I'm sorry. I moved on. Another swimmer over there. I want some coffee here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
On Foxborough, I met with Mr. Link last week. I'm thrilled that we are pushing these parks. I want to thank you, Brad, publicly. We're going to be back at pace, we're going to get the basketball courts up, we're getting the rocks out in Lions Park, the equipment's down at Lions Park. Now that equipment's going to be going up, so we are, we're making, we're fogging mirrors up, right? Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Waddington. It's excellent that we get another park out there in the neighborhood for the kids to play on. You know, believe it or not, playgrounds make memories for kids. You know, they make friends there. You know, it's an important social aspect for the kids out there. Also, I would encourage that we pay more attention to the basketball courts. We have a lot of half-basketball courts. You know, we don't have half-tennis courts, we've got half-basketball courts. So it makes it hard to play a good game of basketball. So going forward, I would like to see that we complete the basketball courts in the areas that they are, and bring that back for the kids.
Additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Poehl.
Just one, actually, and I echo what Mr. Lockhart says about basketball courts. It's not privy to this exactly, but since my partner here brought it up, before we do any more basketball courts, we do need to do a thorough, have a thorough conversation about what we're going, how we're going to provide basketball courts, where we're going to provide them, and at what level we're going to do that across the city. I would, I would recommend that you engage us to do that.
I would just like to say that through you, Commissioner President, through Commissioner Poehl, and Commissioner Lockhart, that the basketball court that is going at Orlando Pace will actually be the only full-size basketball court, the official full-size basketball court that we have in the city. The ones at J.C. are a little smaller version. The one at Orlando Pace is going to be an actual high school, college-sized basketball court with all the margins and everything. But yes, we will in the future do more.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments on item number seven? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Item eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tree Experts of Huron, Ohio, for the 2017 tree removal and trim project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Oh, and Mr. Poehl, I've been handed a piece of paper that answers the question, actually since the communication. Sixty-eight dead trees and forty-one boulevard trees.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is that's a segue into, I don't think that's enough trees.
Right.
Simple as that. Contract's not big enough, we're not getting enough done in, in the season, and that's my thoughts on, sir.
Well.
But I'll approve, I will approve what you put out.
Sure, right. You just want to do more.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
We are continually taking trees down, correct, Mr. Brady, throughout the winter?
That's correct.
That's ongoing right now. This is for 2017, it's coming up for next year, correct? Going in the next, it's coming.
This, through Commissioner President, through Commissioner Waddington, this is the 2017 tree list. These are trees that will come down and be trimmed in 2017. This does not include any work that we do in-house with our staff, which, to this point, we've done, correct, as two employees.
Thank you, yeah.
To this point, we have taken ten trees down. I know it seems finer, but with two people and limited help from other staff, we do continue to trim and remove trees as much as possible on the boulevard and in our parks and center.
And through the commission, oh, sorry, through the commission president, to the commission, I would add that the budget that was approved by the finance committee that will come to the city commission for approval on March 13th, does include the addition of one full-time employee and one seasonal employee in forestry, so that we'll be able to move to two, two crews eternally throughout the warmer weather months of the season, and most of this work can get done, so.
And I need to make an announcement, because we are just about out of time on the recording system. And so for the folks who are watching this program at home, we're going to go, we're going to go dark here in a minute. We'll still have, we'll still have minutes made, but, Mr. Brady, I just want to warn you, any further grandstanding on your part. Further debate on the item eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I'm liaison to the tree commission, and, and I can tell you from my experience working with the people there, Mr. Link and others, that it's, it's a matter of not, the city not caring about doing these trees, it's a matter of manpower and labor, which, as the city manager stated, that we're increasing the manpower. I myself would like to see more trees going down, but I do recognize there are trees going down every day. In fact, I passed one just, just yesterday that they were taking down. I went out with Mr. Link to witness how we take down these trees. And it's, it's labor-intensive, because you can't just simply go out, as we would, and just chop it down, you know, we can't all be like George Washington. They have to take it down in a safe manner, that's safe for the neighborhood and the people that are around that. So, you know, it takes a little bit more time to do it the right way. But we are increasing that, I want to see that. Our staffing levels increase, and, you know, if we need, be higher additional contractors here in 2017. But we are, we have charged the tree commission with coming up with a plan to let everyone know exactly where we are, so we're not, I would say, somewhat in the dark that we can let the public know where we are and where we intend to be as far as the tree removal.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now our final item, number nine, please.
Item number nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the second change order for work being performed by Hank's Plumbing and Heating Company, Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Big Island Water Works Emergency Intake Rehabilitation and Chemical Feed Line Installation Project, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Oh, and Mr. Poehl, I've been handed a piece of paper that answers the question, actually since the communication. Sixty-eight dead trees and forty-one boulevard trees.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is that's a segue into, I don't think that's enough trees.
Right.
Simple as that. Contract's not big enough, we're not getting enough done in, in the season, and that's my thoughts on, sir.
Well.
But I'll approve, I will approve what you put out.
Sure, right. You just want to do more.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
We are continually taking trees down, correct, Mr. Brady, throughout the winter?
That's correct.
That's ongoing right now. This is for 2017, it's coming up for next year, correct? Going in the next, it's coming.
This, through Commissioner President, through Commissioner Waddington, this is the 2017 tree list. These are trees that will come down and be trimmed in 2017. This does not include any work that we do in-house with our staff, which, to this point, we've done, correct, as two employees.
Thank you, yeah.
To this point, we have taken ten trees down. I know it seems fine, but with two people and limited help from other staff, we do continue to trim and remove trees as much as possible on the boulevard and in our parks and center.
And through the commission, oh, sorry, through the commission president, to the commission, I would add that the budget that was approved by the finance committee that will come to the city commission for approval on March 13th, does include the addition of one full-time employee and one seasonal employee in forestry, so that we'll be able to move to two, two crews eternally throughout the warmer weather months of the season, and most of this work can get done, so.
And I need to make an announcement, because we are just about out of time on the recording system. And so for the folks who are watching this program at home, we're going to go, we're going to go dark here in a minute. We'll still have, we'll still have minutes made, but, Mr. Brady, I just want to warn you, any further grandstanding on your part. Further debate on the item eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I'm liaison to the tree commission, and, and I can tell you from my experience working with the people there, Mr. Link and others, that it's, it's a matter of not, the city not caring about doing these trees, it's a matter of manpower and labor, which, as the city manager stated, that we're increasing the manpower. I myself would like to see more trees going down, but I do recognize there are trees going down every day. In fact, I passed one just, just yesterday that they were taking down. I went out with Mr. Link to witness how we take down these trees. And it's, it's labor-intensive, because you can't just simply go out, as we would, and just chop it down, you know, we can't all be like George Washington. They have to take it down in a safe manner, that's safe for the neighborhood and the people that are around that. So, you know, it takes a little bit more time to do it the right way. But we are increasing that, I want to see that. Our staffing levels increase, and, you know, if we need, be higher additional contractors here in 2017. But we are, we have charged the tree commission with coming up with a plan to let everyone know exactly where we are, so we're not, I would say, somewhat in the dark that we can let the public know where we are and where we intend to be as far as the tree removal.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now our final item, number nine, please.
Item number nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the second change order for work being performed by Hank's Plumbing and Heating Company, Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Big Island Water Works Emergency Intake Rehabilitation and Chemical Feed Line Installation Project, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
on March 13th and March 27th, by motion?
So moved. Second. It's been a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those hearings are set.
Thank you. And then there was another one for new business.
I'll take care of that one. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Comments? Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Just want to quick thank you to Hank and the finance committee, I attended the meeting on Friday, and it's nice to pick this up from years past, doing line-by-line, and staying down here for several meetings, you probably recall that, Mr. Murray, in the past, this is easy to read, I just think it's a great way to go, it's going to save a lot of time, I know we're going to have the public hearing, but I think overall, we've got a great finance committee right now, we've got a lot of competent people on there, and I told Hank before the meeting tonight, that's, it was a nice read over the weekend, about to pull this up and go online and read it, so, thank you.
Mr. Lockhart.
I think it was maybe, what, two weeks ago, if I'm correct, we, I along with Maria Moritorie, who's not sitting there anymore, and Matt Lasco, the director of development, we all together hosted a forum for the housing and development program that we have for 2017, and we had a good showing of people there, a good 25 people, they were very happy about it, they even gave us a round of applause, which is just, you know, really good and unusual, but, the purpose of me bringing that up is, I want to show and recognize excellence in our staff, in Director Lasco and Maria Moritorie, for taking the time to do that, because that time could have been time they spent with their families, or doing the things they needed to do in their personal life, because they, time and time again, have come after work, working hours, and above and beyond what they're called to do, and they do it, you know, and I've really never heard them complain, and God knows, I call them all the time, but, I really want to thank new Director Lasco, I really want to thank Maria Moritorie, she's not here right now, but I'd still like to give you a big round of applause for that, so if everybody could just give them a round of applause, that would really.
Other, oh, keep going, I don't know, somebody needs some words. Other items of old business. I, at the last meeting, I announced, with respect to the appointment of the fire selection board, the fire chief selection board, that I would be serving on that, Mr. Lockhart prevailed upon me subsequent to that, that he would like to serve as my designee, since he is the fire department liaison, so, I'm just announcing that he's going to serve on the fire selection board with my thanks.
Do I get to hold a gavel now?
Other items of old business. New business.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Mr. Brady. You don't really want to be tarred and feathered, and there is some question about whether or not, given the hour, we might not want to just continue the review, which we had anticipated completing of Mr. Whoopsir until after the next, at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, so I don't, I think we're at a core.
As long as you don't make a couple of parties that happen.
Mr. Chairman, my request did not deal with the executive session, it dealt with whether I could leave early, because I'm usually in bed by 8:00.
I'm sorry, was there something else, Mr. Brady?
That was all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Cool.
I have some new business, and I throw this out here for, I'm looking for feedback from some specific community members, a couple of weeks ago, I asked the chief of police to.
Sorry, I missed that.
To do a traffic study on Monroe Street, essentially, from around the 1900 block, or actually, from about Tiffin Ave, going down to Edgewater Drive, the concept, the idea was this, is the speed limit's 35 miles an hour there currently, I did receive some complaints from people living on that street that about, because of narrowness of the street and the speed of the traffic, some folks have had their vehicles hit, knocked off the mirrors and so forth, and also, as we move forward with Lions Park, and trying to move bicyclists and become a community that's, that people are walking through, that I thought that perhaps we'd consider lowering the speed limit to 25, I, it's just, this is my idea to think about, and for those of you who live on Monroe Street, between Tiffin Ave and, or, between, yeah, Tiffin Ave and Edgewater Drive, my email address is in the, on the website, feel free to give me your opinions, we'll gather some data and come to a conclusion and bring it back to you folks at that time.
Other items of old, new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
You know, previously, we had talked about, looked at avenues, ways that the commission could hit their message out to the public, and I spoken to our IT department there, and department two, or three, and four, or five, and I believe that the commission should be broadcast on Facebook Live in some capacity, doesn't impact the budget, but what it does is it gets us out in front of the public, so they can understand what we do and see what we do, more people in the community, because, as it sits, you know, I believe that we need to kind of catch up with things, we are in an iPad and MP3 generation, but we're sending our message out on an eight-track tape in some sense, and so, I want to increase the visibility of the commission and get to more people that may not be able to come here, or may have some apprehension about coming in, so, I'd like to move that we be on Facebook Live, or in some frame of mind, on Facebook broadcast.
Commission President.
Mr. Harris.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Lockhart, not to throw any wrench into the motion, and I understand your desire, I would just like more time to, with Trevor and I, to coordinate with Mr. Hamilton and IT department, because some of the concerns that we have, or some of the concerns that we have with people who come here and show up and state their name and address, and then when you put it on a media such as Facebook Live, we don't have control over the actual process of the commission meeting, so, from that standpoint, I just want to look into potential legality and pitfalls that could come from posting it on Facebook Live.
I see what, I see what you're saying, Mr. Direct, Law Director, but, you know, the point here is that we could move in that direction, and what you're kind of speaking to is sort of what technicality that. I just want to assess. Right, 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 but we can move forward the idea of the Facebook Live, if there's some technicality or legality that prevents us from that, I have no objection to that, but, at this point, I'd like to.
And through the Commission President, Commissioner.
I made a motion to, so, before you.
Did anybody say?
Mr. Chairman.
We can give him to the debate.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
May I make a motion that we direct the manager through the law director to give us the necessary information about whether or not we can legally go to Facebook Live, because I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Does that solve that problem?
That's a motion?
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
We're already on, this evening we'll be on, tomorrow night we'll be on, next week, and then it's on YouTube, available anytime, you can go on your computer anytime and watch it, so I, I don't see the extra cost, you know, that it'd be involved in this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Couple of things, number one, we're off the air already, that's number one, if we were on Facebook Live, we would not be off the air, we actually would still be on online, number two, the cost is in, is like, pretty much nonexistent, if we wanted to be really fancy, and I don't do Facebook at all, I'm not even on Facebook, but everybody I know is, and I recognize that it's a good thing to get more people knowing what we're doing, and I understand all it involves, that we actually could be on Facebook off my cellphone if I turned it on.
Right.
So, other than to do this under control, we could have IT decide what's the best way to do, to provide this, I can see a simple iPad and a, sitting on a tripod facing the room, or facing us from the back, we have someone that already manages our camera, it's a matter of rotating the iPad on the tripod to see whatever you want to see, it's not, it's just not costly at all.
Mr. Lockhart.
You know, like I said before, we're in an iPad and MP3 and streaming and live generation, other cities are going to streaming their content, and as we move forward, you know, there are, I don't know, a billion people on Facebook, you know, and you may not see it in the digital.
I might.
I'm going to explain it to you, hang on, I know, you know, in a digital context, YouTube is a good way to show the meeting, but, it's a destination, and Facebook is where most people are nowadays, you yourself said you're on Facebook, so there shouldn't be any objection, I would think, to being on Facebook, our city page 2018, correct me, Mr. Manager, if I'm wrong, there's about 20,000 or so people on that, I don't know the membership number, I'm just, you know, and, you know, you take that vehicle in itself to show the people what we do, and no huge impact to budget or cost, it is definitely a good way to get out to people to see what we're doing.
Figure questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Lloyd.
With the, with the comments saying we're playing on an eight-track tape, I think we made that step forward in being on YouTube, so, we are available anytime, live streaming, one thing that, I mean, I'm not really opposed to live streaming in a sense, except for the fact I would rather, if someone's available to watch it, if they could come here, I would rather have a human, like, a person in a seat in front of me, so if they have a question or a comment, they can be here, my fear with Facebook Live is that we're creating a space online for debate, when their comments are going to be put out there for everyone, and not everyone can make decisions, and not everyone can make changes, it would be better if they would be able to voice their comments to us via email or in person, so, I don't know, I'm not sure about the Facebook Live thing, because there's a lot of back-and-forth and comments and all of that, and it just may create some hostility, potentially.
Mr. Waddington.
On the, so, if we do this live, we're going to have a recording then later on, so what about if you get off work at 5:00, and we're already an hour in, and a guy takes a shower and eats supper, there's a lot of things.
See YouTube, goes to YouTube.
No, well, you just, he just wants to go Facebook.
No, but he can use, he can go to the.
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
(inaudible).
Okay, so, in response to what Commissioner Lloyd is saying, if you have Facebook Live, you can take out the entire comment section if you want, what happens is, it's recorded, and it's still there for display, in the most common place that people are, you know, if you have a center of town, most people go to center of town, most people go downtown, so why not be downtown where the people are to see the message, so, we can limit debate, we can have no debate, you know, we can do that now, and Mr. Waddington's question, I think I answered, that it will be there in perpetuity on whatever, you know, whatever page, or wherever we choose to have it, it's simply a way that, you know, people can see us, most people are on Facebook, people go to YouTube in, some people do go to YouTube, but there's no problem with seeing us additionally in places where people are and where the generation is going.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Oh, sorry.
I can wait.
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Lockhart, we could also, instead of going Facebook Live, once the YouTube is, the YouTube video's ready, we can post that on our city page, so, it is going to be on Facebook and accessible to those that have, that do follow us on Facebook, or like us on Facebook.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
The concept of, you don't want more people to see this, doesn't, I'm having trouble understanding it, if it was really a bother, or, I don't see any downside to this, you simply livestream it, those who are able to see it at this time, and it's convenient for them, will see it, the content for Mrs. Lloyd, this room seats 40 people, and you would say that somehow or another, you're opposed to allowing, in a community of 25,000 people, let's say, 12,000 to 15,000 adults, perhaps, denying, telling them you're, there just doesn't seem to be any reason to say no to this, you're going to set, you're going to set a device up there that shows our picture, which is what that camera does now, what is the objection to giving people the opportunity to see this when they want to, and if I'm taking a shower at 5:00 when it's on Facebook, I can watch it at 8:30, or I can pick it up when my shower's done, I don't understand how it's possible to say that it's a problem if you allow more people to see this, it sounds more like we're going out of our way to limit people's accessibility to what we're doing.
Can I respond?
I, all right, then I want to have the vote, because I think we're getting repetitious.
I just want to clarify, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know if I have a firm opinion on it, so, that's, that's it.
One last quick thing, please.
Well, one thing I can say is, that we've all engaged Facebook and social media to get outlets, just earlier, the manager had spoken about, he had seen some debate about the HRC and human relations, you know, we communicate in a digital way, we're all tethered, everybody in this room's probably got a smartphone, it gives us the ability to see it where we are, and get that information to us much faster, the fire department, the police department have Facebook pages, the city has a Facebook page, most people here have a Facebook page, so why not be right where they are, why not be tethered to the people when we're doing this, why limit our exposure?
Mr. Chairman, last thing, we're only voting to allow him to go look at what the options are, we have, that's all we're doing.
Restate the question, so, with that, point made, thank you, Mrs. Cresser, would you call, would you, pull the commissioners, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Commissioner's, I would appreciate a motion to set a public hearing for the CDVG Annual Action Plan for April 10th at 2017.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. One last item of new business, I need to take up the, shoot, just, the name of the committee that I just forgot that we voted on.
Administrative Benefits Review Committee.
Administrative Benefits Review Committee, excuse me, and the, has recommended that we pay a bonus to Paige Doster for her extraordinary work, both working in the law department and taking care of the commission clerk responsibilities during Mrs. Cresser's absence, and that was approved unanimously by that committee, and was approved by the finance committee, and I would ask for someone, if you would, please make a motion to make a $1,000 adjustment to, not her base pay, it's a one-time bonus, and.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion, all in favor.
Just a big thank you.
Big thank you.
It's a lot of work.
It was a big job, it was.
Yep, yep, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you, any further business?
Mr. Chairman.
Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to look into recreating the youth commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion.
Sorry, I thought that's what we took, we did earlier, we repealed the previous one, but I thought we had already made a plan to go up.
I think you indicated an intention.
Okay.
But this is a formal motion, okay, so, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.